I'd like to call this meeting of the Clay County Commission to order. Please call the roll.
Okay.
That's what's on my agenda, anyway.
Well, how about we just take attendance since this is a workshop?
I can go with either way. Like I say, I'm fine with either direction, so.
Sounds great.
We seem to have enough people here. We'll go with that.
And we have a junior commissioner with us also.
We do. We do. It's always good to have new blood. All right, if we're all here, go ahead and proceed. Like you say, it is rather informal.
All right. Good morning, commissioners. Thank you for being here and including all our guests that are here to help present to you the proposed general fund budget for 2025. As Commissioner Nolte said, this is very informal. It is a workshop. All your mics are live, so if you have a question, all you have to do is press it, so.
Could you speak just a little bit more loudly? Yeah, thank you.
I know. We're working on the sound. I think everybody back here can hear, but I know we are still having some issues at the dais, and so we apologize for that. Is that better? Can you hear? Okay. So two weeks ago, at the last commission meeting, I did an overview of the proposed 2025 budget. Commission has received your budget books. We have information out on the website. And as you know, we have scheduled in workshops to go into a deeper dive by fund for the next four Wednesdays and a Thursday to go into deeper information about what's included in the proposed 2025 budget. So this morning's workshop is specifically on the general fund. And so our agenda here today is we're going to talk about some of the key considerations that we did in putting the budget together. We'll do a fund overview. We'll get into the revenue and expenditure trends. We'll also talk about the budget highlights and additions. You will hear from the departments that are included in the general fund. And then we'll also review the budget calendar again for the public and for the commission on when the next workshop is and what those topics will be. So we'll just jump right in with, again, our focus has been on putting the budget together and taking into consideration the strategic plan. So the five focus areas that are identified in the strategic plan are up on the slides, but it's safety and well-being, financially sustainability, economic opportunity, infrastructure, and employer of choice. And certainly through many conversations with the commission, you've identified two of your key areas and emphasis, which is safety and well-being and infrastructure. And we have tried to include those items in the budget, and you'll hear more about those as we go through it. We also tried to look at the goals and objectives that were identified in the strategic plan, and so you'll see some things with asterisks as we go through here, and those are specifically called out in the strategic plan that we've tried to implement in the proposed budget. So with that, we're going to start and talk about what is the general fund. So what you have on the screen here is the county's organizational chart. And you've seen this. We talked about it during the overview. But what I've highlighted in green is every department that is in the general fund. So you'll see on the far right where we have our four elected office holders, two of the elected office holders' budgets are in the general fund. On the far left is our court, and you'll see all of that is included in the general fund. And then in the middle, which is the administrative functions of the county, those that are identified in green are included in the general fund, which is a substantial amount. In fact, that's 228 of our full-time employees are in the general fund. So 40% of the county's employees are in the general fund. The items that are highlighted in blue, we will go into a deeper dive during those workshops when we talk about the park fund, the airport fund, the road and bridge fund, the assessors' budget, and then the sheriff's office. So those are workshops yet to come. So we're going to dive right into the general fund. This particular chart shows you and does a comparison for the general fund adopted budget for '23, '24, and one is proposed in 2025. And you'll see that at the far right, we've identified the percentage increase from the '25 proposed budget to the '24 adopted budget. So you'll see the proposed budget is a 13% increase. We'll go in as we go through this workshop and talk about what's driving those increased costs. Primarily, a lot of it is inflationary in our operations and our personnel costs. But we've also kind of broken it down so you can see what are our operating expenditures budget to propose, and that's about a 13.7% increase. Very pleased to say our reserves from what we're proposing versus what was in our adopted budget, we're trying to increase our reserves. That's a 9.9% increase. And then the transfer from the general fund to other operating funds, which we'll talk about a little bit more later on, is an increase of 12.7%. So this particular chart shows you our revenue streams. Where does the revenue come from, from the general fund? And so the pie chart on the left is our operating revenues, the revenue that comes in on an annual basis to operate the general fund. And so you can see by the pie chart that 66% of the revenue to operate the general fund, 40% of our employees and all those green boxes, comes from sales tax and use tax. The second largest revenue stream is from fees and fines at 19%. And then you have some other smaller amounts of revenue that come in. Now, the pie chart on the right shows you available funds for the general fund. And so you see that percentage changes because we throw into that, including in funds available for general operating, is our reserves. And so that, if you look at the total, which is the authorized budget of $57 million, sales tax is 49% of the income, and reserves is 26, and then followed by fees, fines, and licenses. Doing a little bit more information for the commission about our major funds. And so sales tax, as we said, is 66% of our revenue. So what you show here on this particular chart for you is what has been our actual sales tax in the general fund from 2019 through 2023. So you see actual, and you see the percentage of growth from year to year. '24, we had this particular budget here, is our projection from what we're seeing now, and our sales tax and use taxes coming in strong in 2024. So we're seeing an increase. And because of that trend, and I talked about this in the budget overview, that we really had an opportunity since COVID to kind of, this year in 2025, true up what we believe our sales taxes be, because for the last several years, our sales taxes exceeded what we put in the budget. And because we were very conservative and waiting to kind of see how are we going to get back to normal after COVID? And so we believe we have those analysis available to us. And so you'll see in 2025, proposed budget, our sales tax is 2.25% growth over what we're projecting, not budgeted in '24, but what we are projecting to come in in 2024. So again, trying to be conservative, but being in line with what we're really seeing happening. Now, for the first time in 2025, we are proposing that the use tax transfers some funds into the general fund. Typically, historically, the use tax has only gone into our three different capital funds. But because we're not taking any and holding any funds for TIF, as we've done in the past from 10 to seven, and this year's seven, we're not proposing because really TIF does not apply to internet sales. So that freed up money on a regular basis. And so we are recommending what's included in the proposed budget is 4.3 million of use tax going to the general fund. We are still proposing use taxes increasing in the park and the general and the road and bridge capital funds also. Property tax, you'll see, is a reduction, a projection from this year into 2025, almost a 25% rejection. That is reflective of the action taken by the commission earlier in your desire to voluntarily roll back the middle levy in the general fund for the second year to help our taxpayers. And so you'll see that slight reduction in property tax revenue. And then fees, fines, and licenses, you'll see, were taken slightly a decrease from what we're projecting this year. And that's really kind of looking at trends, reading it, and saying, you know, there are some things where what we're seeing and hearing is housing market is down, and so some of our permitting and our fees. So we've taken a conservative approach. It's not a lot of dollars. You're talking about a couple hundred thousand dollars. But it is, right now, a 2.36% reduction. And, you know, please stop me if you have any questions.
That sounds like an invitation.
Uh, yeah.
I'm sorry. Under that property tax, and just to comment a moment ago, which I understand are rollback, but this proposed amount still includes whatever projected growth we think will occur within the county as far as the new. So this is net?
Right.
Even that new growth?
That is correct.
Okay.
So there are assumptions about new construction coming in. Now, I will say, we know that the senior tax relief, property tax relief program will be in effect in 2025. We have not really factored that in. And so that's another reason for sort of taking our conservative approach with that.
Thank you.
When we had an action a little earlier this year where we decided not to put in some of the third-party expenditures, that was a savings of a certain, you know, some hundreds of thousands of dollars. One of the things that came up during that discussion was that would have to offset that change. Does that, is that reflected elsewhere in the budget?
Well, I will say, when we get into the expenditure side of it, there is no funding for outside agencies. So that is reflected. That savings has been taken on the expenditure side.
I guess my question is, and when we get to that, if you could expand on when you get to the proper point in your presentation, but my thought is, while that's certainly a reduction, it seems like we might have picked it up elsewhere in the budget. So I'm just wanting to, you know, make sure that we didn't, that we covered that offset.
Sure. Right. So now we're going to get into, I guess.
I just want to clarify. You made the comment, there's no spending for outside agencies. Just to be clear, we will still spend about $27 million on outside agencies. It's just that extra couple hundred thousand dollars, which I call the slush fund for the commission. We won't be spending that. So I want to make sure that's clear.
You're absolutely correct. As commission is aware, there are dedicated revenue streams that have been approved by the voters for certain outside agencies, and so that money is certainly earmarked and will go to those agencies. What I'm referring to is there has been historically, in the general fund operating budget, a department called outside agencies, and there was a list in which those funds were allocated. And so the commission made the decision, you know, not to do that in 2025. And we'll talk a little bit more about that, because you'll see an impact in the commission's budget on one of those items as we go forward, so. When we get into the authorization, so the total authorized for the general fund is 50, a little over $57 million. And so the pie chart basically provides to you, how are those dollars spent? How are they allocated? And again, remember, this is full-end authorization. 43% of the budget is in personnel, 33% is in contractual, and then 23% of it is in transfers. Again, remember, we're only talking about the general fund. Now, the chart on the far right is a list of all the department or functions, as I refer to them, that are in the general fund, and there are 30 of them there. And so what this does is show you their budget and what percentage of the authorization is allocated to that particular function. So you'll see, if we're just looking at functions, transfers out of the general fund is 23% of the authorization. Benefits insurance is 10%, juveniles 10%, our reserves are 9%. The prosecutor's office is 8, IT is 6%, and it goes all down to, you know, .02%. So just giving you an information about how is the authorization allocated in the proposed 2025 budget. And we'll go through each one of these a little bit, and you'll hear from the departments and the office holders about what's included and proposed in their budget. But as we know, that's the authorized budget. That is not our operating budget, because it includes reserves. And so if we look at the operating budget for the general fund, it's $51.8 million. That does include the transfer, but it does exclude reserves. And so when we look at the operating budget.
Excuse.
Does that make sense? Yes?
Diane, I have a question.
Oh, sure, absolutely.
So as I'm looking at this general fund, when I went through the book and spent hours scrutinizing, one of the things that jumped out at me that I don't see on here, which may be in with something else, is on contractual, there's an item on here for training for 2025, 2024. '24 was 40, 40,000.
Excuse me, commissioner? Commissioner, could you give us the page number so we can follow your?
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Sure.
Page three of 253 pages that I went through. At the bottom, very bottom of that.
Could you give us an account number, commissioner?
It's training expenses.
What, uh? Yeah, what, what office or department?
I'm sorry?
What, like, department or office, or, you know, who's training, I guess?
On the 501 fund.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, thank you. Okay.
So the?
The county clerk.
I'm sorry, yeah, 501.
Okay, so that, that would be the county clerk's office?
Okay, okay.
Because, to your point, we have a chart of accounts, right? And so we're talking general fund, and these are all functions. And so they all have their department budgets, and within their department budgets, they have line item category budgets. So almost every department has a training budget. So that's why the auditor was asking you, which department were you inquiring about?
Okay. And so are those training, like, a new person comes in and they have to train them? You know, how all the fees and things of that nature concern?
It's going to the state clerks conference. It could be going to a local clerks conference.
Okay.
So, and it could be doing other kinds of training, so. But generally, it is trying to go to state training, local, regional training. You know, they may have some other type of training that they have planned. And they'll be different for each department.
I beg your pardon?
They'll be different for each department.
Okay. Yeah, I noticed that.
Because for some, maybe technical training, right? So if you're talking about in our road and bridge department, maybe it'd be about getting CDL certification or getting training on a specific piece of equipment. So it varies what that training looks like depending upon the department's needs.
I noticed, you know, huge amounts, like in the sheriff, but I could get that. I see why there's so much intense training. I get, like, in road and bridge, why there's so much training after teach these people how to use the equipment or whatever it may be. But I was surprised at that figure that wasn't in one of those departments.
Sure.
So that makes some sense.
And we value training for our employees and giving them opportunities, and especially, like, in the clerk or the collector, the recorder. A lot of it is training, because what has Jeff City done that we need to be aware of on how to implement? And so going to those state conferences and regional conferences and regional Kansas City area helps us stay in tune with what we should be doing depending on changes that come down from Jeff City. So there are all sorts of training that are very important for us to meet the needs of our citizens and to be functioning appropriately.
Okay, thank you.
So again, we're talking about the operating budget, $51.8 million. Again, it includes transfers, but it excludes the reserves. And so when you look at the operating budget, you can see that 47% of the operating budget is on personnel, 26 is in contractual, and 25% of it is in transfers. So we should show it to you by a pie chart. I know some people actually prefer to see numbers. And so you see the chart there to the bottom right of the slide that gives you historical on, by category. Again, we have the personnel category, contractual, commodities, and capital, and then we added transfers. And so you see historically what actual has been since 2019, what we're estimating in 2024, and what we're proposing in 2025. Transfers, because transfers is a fairly large number out of the general fund budget. And so I wanted to show to you all sort of historically where the transfers have been in the past, what they've actually been, and what we're proposing in 2025. So you can see here, you know, if you look at 2019, 2020, 21, you know, there are some departments or funds that we transferred for that we have not been transferring over the last several years. But we've been fairly consistent since '22 through 2025 proposed. And so our largest transfer on an as-needed basis is to the law enforcement fund. We're proposing $12.5 million, and that compares to our estimate in this year of $10.1 million. Now, you'll notice the next line down is emergency communications, which is our 911 fund. So historically, the general fund has had to transfer into the 911 fund for our costs with MARC. But as you know, our voters very supported implementing a dedicated revenue stream to the 911 fund for 911, which covers not only the MARC, but our dispatching costs out of the sheriff's budget. So the general fund is now not needed to transfer any funds to the 911 fund. I would like to share, I know the commission has been aware, you know, that was implemented, it was voted on in 2023 and went into effect in April of 2024. And we knew, ramping up in '24, we did not budget, you know, all in, that every agency was, supplier, I should say, or provider, was going to get with it and start charging in April. And so we kind of planned for that, and so we've been sort of using general fund this year to cover for that. Most of the providers are on board. We had one large provider that had not been participating. The auditor has been bird-dogging them, which I appreciate, and has finally, we were informed that they were going to implement it. Then the bills came out, and we weren't charged. And so they had a snafu with their technology, and so they have told us that they will be placing it on the December bills for their customers. But they also indicated that they would retro back till April, but they themselves will be paying it and not putting it on the burden of their customers, which we sincerely appreciate. So going forward in 2025, we anticipate all providers will be on board and implementing that, and we'll see that revenue stream next year. Then we have some small funds that are there, but I think it's important to note that, you know, the transfer historically has been going up and will continue to go up in how we support specifically the law enforcement fund in their operations. So with that, I'm going to dig into the overview of the functions. And so with that, I'm going to ask Judge Fluke and Judge O'Hara to come to the table here, and I'm going to start in. We're going to follow the same kind of format with each function. So I'm kind of going to give an overview of the judicial function with their budget, and then department heads, office holders, judges that will be here to kind of talk to you a little bit about what have been their highlights of 2024, what are their budget highlights for 2025, kind of talk about what's in their budget, and then certainly answer any questions that the commission has. So what you see here is the chart for the judicial function. And so there are five different functions that we've kind of grouped together. So courts, juvenile, prosecutor, medical examiner, and the public administrator all fall within this group. And so what you see in the chart is what was the '24 budget, and what do we have in the '25 budget proposed, and what's that percentage change? And so you'll see courts is up about 7% in the proposed budget, and there are specific costs associated with that. First and foremost is we have a trial coming forward in 2025 in which there are some additional costs that will be incurred as a result of that type of trial that will occur, including sequestering the jury. There is additional training requests in the budget. There are also an increase for interpreters. They're seeing more and more need to hire interpreters for court cases, so they've increased that amount. Also, there is a request to increase the attorney fees for indigent parents of juveniles. That we're seeing more of a need for that. So that's kind of what's driving the increase in the juvenile department budget, or, excuse me, courts. In juvenile, you'll see we have a 10% increase. One of the things that's in there, and I talked about it briefly at the overview, is to expand the shift differential pay for those individuals that work in juvenile detention and the group homes. In 2024, you approved a shift differential from midnight to, like, 6:00 or 8:00 in the morning, which has helped. But we also have that night shift coming in from 6:00 till midnight. And so the recommendation is to also layer in another shift differential for that night program. Also included in their numbers is the capital request. We have some security projects at Juvenile Justice that we are recommending to occur. They're also seeing increase in their food prices, and they've requested to replace desks in the detention classroom that are past their life expectancy. With regard to the prosecutor's budget going up 7%, there's a couple of things in there. One is, as we talked about in the overview, we're recommending an 8% increase to personnel in the prosecutor's office to align with the market. Also, there is a new position, a paralegal position, that is included in that budget. The medical examiner is a contract. That is a 3% increase. That is part of the contract. This 2025 will be the fourth year of the contract with this particular medical examiner. So the contract expires in December of 2026, and so the county will need to go out to bid in 2026 for those services. And then the public administrator has a 5% increase, which is really reflective of our proposed cost of living. of our proposed cost of living increase and for our employees at a 5% rate. With that, I would turn it over to Judge Fluke and Judge O'Hare. If they want to step up and we can turn on the mics if you will have some. And would you like the clicker? Would you like me to do the clicking for you?
You can do the clicking.
I can do the clicking.
It's pretty short. All right. Good morning. I am Alicia O'Hara. Judge Fluke had to step out, so I'll be filling in for both of us. Some of the accomplishments that we have with the courts this year and I believe. Again, we secured grant funding for numerous projects that we have going on, at least within the family court. I think that we talked to you all a little bit about this last year, but close to $200,000 in grant funding. None of the funding that we apply for is matching funding. So the county doesn't need to kick in any money. It's just money that helps support our programs within the family court. We also, in an effort to try to mitigate some costs, throughout the state of Missouri, a lot of different counties have shut down their juvenile detention centers. And we still have ours here in Clay County. And so we have increased the cost to the surrounding counties significantly because they don't have a choice, basically. They have to be able to house their children somewhere and we have a spot. So we're able to increase it. It's my understanding, no one has even really said boo about it. So that's a way that we can help mitigate the costs. As you all know, food and different things like that come up and those costs continue to rise. So we raised that to try to help mitigate some of the costs that Clay County has. Under the leadership of Judge Alexander, there's now a DWI treatment court that the prosecutor's office could talk more about increased visits and transitions programs that we talked to you all a couple of years ago now, I guess, about trying to reunify children and their families. And I think I told you Clay County is one of the top counties and we remain one of the top counties and have for the last two years in reunification. Our numbers are far and away better than all of our surrounding counties and we're really proud of that. But it takes a lot of hard work and we have been able to increase the number of visits these parents can have, which allows us to know if we can safely reunify them, which is ultimately the goal. And then the domestic violence court program started last October. We started with three participants. We have over 50 now. So there's a lot of individuals in that program. We're really proud of the program and the growth that it's had. And certainly the changes in those individuals' lives, they are just magnified because of all the other changes in the people and their families and their associates' lives as well. As far as infrastructure goes, I think that Ms. Rogers is probably better suited to talk about that. But there are some federal guidelines that we have to comply with. We are complying with those now. And I believe that there was a time when we would just have one individual at some of the group homes, which is a real problem when you've got that many children. And at the group homes, those are not foster homes. Those are children who have committed crimes and are being housed. So now we're able to have some more staff there. So those are some of the accomplishments that the court has had. And also, kind of like Ms. Wright said, if you all have any questions, I'll do my best to answer them. Feel free to interrupt me. As far as our goals, we want to continue to expand our domestic violence program, continue to reunify our children, which we're, you know, I think we're doing a really nice job of, and to continue to implement some of the safety enhancements that we need for our juvenile facilities. One of the items that Ms. Wright talked about that I didn't know much about, the desks that we're requesting over in juvenile, their special desk. Our kids will pick them up and throw them. They will carve into them. They will do different things. So we can't just buy a typical desk that you would get at a grade school or something like that. We need these to be anchored into the ground so that everyone is safe, the other children that are there as well as the staff. As far as the employer of choice, we again, if we can expand that shift differential pay in the detention and the group homes, when you all allowed us to do that last year, for the first time, we didn't have the constant turnover that we've had in years past, which is, it's helpful, but it's also a safety issue. So we get these individuals, they stay on and they train and it keeps everyone safer, including the workers. As far as infrastructure, computer replacement program, that would be more of a Judge Fluke question. I don't know much about that. Courtroom technology upgrades, IT kind of tells us what it is that we need to stay current with what OSCA is requiring of us. Construct a transition facility. I believe that this will be talked about later, but this is what I talked to you guys about two years ago. We've been working on it pretty much nonstop. I think we have a really, really great plan in place that I believe will be talked about later. And that comes from some of the ARPA funds. And then finally, there was a roof replacement for the Rooney Justice Center that was long overdue. There was, you know, buckets of water coming in. The roof is a flat roof and so that required replacement. So those are some of the goals moving forward. Does anyone have any questions that I can answer?
Couple of quick questions. One, on the 25 proposed budget, does that include all of the COLAs or pay adjustments?
Yes.
They're included in all of that?
And the proposed budget does include the 5% across the board except for the detention officers and also for the prosecutor's office, which are slightly, those two areas are slightly different than the 5%. And it does also include the expansion of the shift differential pay that is being requested here. All the things that you see here are in the numbers that we are presenting to you.
And were they included in the class and comp study?
The positions that are county positions are, yes. Yes.
Okay. And then the last thing, I think you mentioned with the interpreter for the courts?
Yes.
What?
I can talk about that then. Sure. So we just have more and more individuals let against that are appearing in front of us that don't speak English. And we are required to make sure that they have access to language interpreters. So we have to then pay these interpreters. It's really expensive. There's a minimum, we pay their travel time. If we cancel, we have to pay for them as well. One of the things that I was at a conference elsewhere and, sorry, this microphone is, there's some feedback, but there's a device called Pocket Talk and it looks like a little iPhone, okay? And it's $250 for a year subscription. I think that it translates to almost 200 different languages. You can also scan a document and hit translate and it will translate. So I brought those to an in-bank meeting that we had earlier this year to show the other judges how it works. I ordered one for Division III. And when we have individuals appear the first time they're in court, oftentimes we don't know if they're going to need an interpreter or not. And they are allowed to bring a family member if they want that person to interpret for them too, which saves us a lot of money. So showed all the other judges, we've all ordered them for our courtrooms now. So the price of the Pocket Talk is about the same cost as having an interpreter appear one time. So we all have those in our courtrooms now. And if it's clear someone doesn't speak English, we can find out what language they do speak, click that language, that language to English. I can read what they're saying and talk back to them, at least to have some dialogue at the beginning to see, you know, are we even setting this for trial? Is this something where maybe we can resolve the case today? So we are required to provide this, but I will tell you that the court in-bank has been doing what we can do to try to mitigate those costs. Unfortunately, with interpreters, they also are only allowed to interpret for X amount of hours. I think it's two hours at a time. So if we're in the middle of a trial, we then have to have an interpreter, two interpreters present and they switch off. So the costs are going up significantly. Another trial that Ms. Wright talked about, we have a death penalty case coming up. I think the costs of that alone are going to reach $200,000 to try this case. So those are some of our big, big court expenses right now.
So are you saying you're seeing an increase in the courts of non-English speaking?
Yep.
And what are they speaking?
Everything. So it would be easy if it was just one or two languages. It's very specific dialects from all different places. So yes, I see a lot of Russians, Sudanese, Spanish, obviously. And those interpreters are easy to get, the Spanish interpreters. But some of these other languages, there might be one or two in the Kansas City area. It's very hard to get them and on short notice, we just can't.
And do you have any opinion why we're seeing an increase in non-English speaking people in our court system?
I do not.
Is this mostly criminals we're talking about or witnesses?
I don't even handle a criminal docket right now. And I have individuals that don't speak English almost every single day.
Okay, I'm just curious as to why we're getting such an increase in non-English speaking people in our justice system. I can speculate, but.
Yeah, and I wouldn't say it's such an increase. That wouldn't be a word that I would use. I would say it's an increase.
Okay.
But the problem is also if people aren't prepared for court and you come back numerous times, each one of those times, we have to bring someone. So for myself, I don't handle any criminal cases except for the juvenile cases right now. And occasionally, some of those delinquency cases, the criminal cases, will require an interpreter. I see it a lot in order protection cases. And then, I mean, yesterday, was it yesterday? Yeah, I was in trial and I needed an interpreter for a divorce case. So and I believe this was Sudanese. So.
Thank you.
I will also tell you, I think sometimes certain individuals say they need an interpreter when they might not. But out of an abundance of caution, so we don't have a case that ends up coming back and being reversed, we just have to have to have them rather than try a case twice. Mr. Nolte, did you have a question?
Yeah, I was wondering, is there a standard where an interpreter has to have a certain degree of proficiency? Because I can see where if that proficiency was not present, that could be grounds for saying they were not properly represented. So I was kind of wondering whether that was present. And I don't expect you to necessarily know the answer to this question, but I would wonder if there are because of the obvious demand in other areas of life, if there is a pipeline that is filling up as far as a fresh supply of interpreters who will be coming in. But that will also be competing with other areas that require interpreters. Schools comes to mind. So if you could comment on that, what is the level of proficiency required if there is a standard that is in place in law?
There is. There's certifications that all of our court interpreters have to have. So we can't just go on Facebook and say, hey, I need an interpreter. Will you show up? So all of them have certifications. Denise Banning handles all of our interpreters and the scheduling of those. So when we have one, our clerks will let her know that we need one. She has all the languages. And then they have to, before we even start the procedure, they have to be sworn in the same way that a witness is. And they swear under oath that they have all the qualifications that are required for them to translate. Another thing that we did purchase also is some headsets for some of them, which can be helpful and allows things to go faster so that we don't have to say something, wait for the interpreter, say something back. And that helps with the costs and not taking quite so long. But it's, you know, it's required. I wish that the state, I think the state's looking at it too. I can tell you, there's a couple of committees I'm sitting on that were looking at it. That's where I learned about the Pocket Talk. And so, you know, in the small counties where they don't have access like we do, they are struggling immensely with this issue.
By the way, just for a housekeeping thing here, this is an open discussion. So this is not as formal as before where you would be recognized, say, in a regular meeting. So I just want to make sure everybody realized, feel free to catch the attention and then the speaker will recognize you as opposed to going through myself. So please just keep that in mind as you're wanting to comment.
Okay, well, I'm gonna jump in. Thank you. Just a quick question. What do you do or are you seeing an increase, I should say, like at the juvenile detention center of individuals who cannot speak English? Has that raised its ugly head?
No.
Oh, good.
Yeah, I don't see that. And Ms. Rogers is shaking her head no that she doesn't see either. So no.
This device that you're talking about, I think that's phenomenal.
It's great. It's fabulous. Yep.
And if you can utilize that, you know, then there's not as much need for those individuals to come and translate.
Yep.
No.
Yeah, it's great.
Something that I was talking the other night when I was at the annex, we were talking about the need for people who speak a different language. And evidently, we've got someone there and we have someone here in the courthouse that speaks Spanish. So they don't have to, you know, worry. There's always, they can give that assistance to someone. Do you have those individuals in the court system that speak and can come help?
We don't. I will tell you, when I was doing some research on what we could do to try and mitigate these costs because it comes up pretty frequently. When I was researching this Pocket Talk device, there are police agencies throughout the United States that use this. There are counties that use it. I mean, I think it's something that I would say, we're going to have a new circuit clerk soon, but that we should probably talk to the circuit clerk's office about getting a few of these so that when the individuals come into the courthouse, we can communicate with them. Because it's a large barrier and everyone should have access to the courts. And like I said, they're about this large. I've even used it when I've had deaf individuals come into court because I can talk into it and just have it read English, but I can show it to them. And then they can type into it and then show it to me. So it's pretty neat. And the way that it can read a document is phenomenal. You can take any document from any language, translate it to any other language also. So it doesn't have to be something too English. You could do Spanish to French, you know, if you wanted to. So they're neat devices. Most of us judges now, we keep one on our bench and we're all pretty impressed with it. And it's, you know, the cost is just so minimal.
I'm highly impressed with it. So I think all of us ought to have one anymore. Quick question though, what did you say, and I apologize, I missed it. What did you say one of those cost?
200, I believe it's $249.
Per?
Per device. And then it has the year subscription and then.
What does that run?
I think it's $40 maybe. I don't remember exactly.
Wow.
It's not expensive whatsoever. And then every time there's an update, that's free as well and included in the subscription. And if you order more than X amount, you can get discounts.
Great. Great, great use. Very smart.
Yeah, thanks.
Lot cheaper than interpreter. Lot cheaper than interpreter. A quick question. I don't want to get too far in the weeds in this. Actually, I think we already are too far in the weeds. But anyways, your interpreters are contracted out, they're not employees?
Correct.
They, can you legally have a court employee be an interpreter? Do you know?
You mean just call someone from a different office and say, hey, we have a.
Yeah, someone that works for you that's certified as an interpreter.
Would we pay them also or no?
Well, that's what I'm getting to next. That's what I'm wondering. If you could do that, I'm just throwing out ideas. So I worked a lot in LA county courts.
Sure.
We did a lot of that. We had employees who are also certified as interpreters that, hey, we need an interpreter in a pinch. And they get paid, you know, we pay them to get the certification. We pay them extra hourly, you know, whatever. That's just kind of a perk that they, that we pay for. But we have someone on staff who can go right now as an interpreter. But I didn't know here if that's something that you can do. You can use a county employee for that or a court employee or it has to be an independent contractor for?
So I think that we would have to run that by OSCA, the courts would. My concern is typically, at least in my history of working for Clay County and the state, is that we can't pay someone to do two jobs at once. So I guess you all would probably have to allow us, you know, because someone would be on the clock and they'd be leaving their county job to go translate. And the only other issue I could see would be depending on what department they worked in. You know, I think if they worked in parks and they came over for a criminal case, it would be fine. But if we had someone that worked in the courts, I think that there would be a concern that they can access documents. Maybe someone could then allege they didn't translate this correctly because they knew I was accused of. You know, I think that there could potentially be those issues. But if we had someone on staff with the county, I think that we could probably find a way to. I think if it was a county employee, we could find a way to do that.
I just want there to be some bias issues. But I'm just throwing out an idea, you know, give our employees some more money at the same time, give you an option to have somebody, you know, ready to go at a moment's notice. But anyways, that's enough for our topic.
I think Commissioner Johnson is right. We are kind of getting deep in the weeds on this. I think we do need to move along or we'll be here for quite a while. Just suffice to say that it is a problem that is going to be confronting us in the years down the road. And also the complication of dialects in different languages sometimes renders two, say, Spanish speakers almost unable to communicate because their dialects are so different. So the complexities are great and I think this warrants being taken up at a future time.
All righty. Thank you. Before the judge leaves, I want to talk just briefly about the construction of the transition facility. As the judge brought up. Um, as the judge brought up, um, this is a project we've been working on for two years, trying to find a sufficient location, uh, to meet their needs. Um, as the commission may recall, you authorized, um, five hundred thousand dollar total of ARPA money. Uh, at one point, there was a property that had been identified in which we put a offer in on that property. Unfortunately, we were not successful in acquiring that property. Um, the judge and her staff and our staff, you know, continued to look for avenues. We were not successful in finding anything. As you recall, at one point, we talked about, um, putting the facility and building a facility, um, where the current structure is that has been used, which is structurally unavailable and we've had to not use that building. But as you all know, it's a historical building. Uh, we ran into some challenges with that also with the City of Liberty. So, in working with the judge, um, we have found a solution and we will be coming to the commission next week at your meeting with a proposal. We will be discussing it tomorrow night during the ARPA discussion. Um, we, um, have, we're proposing, and I think I provided information in the, um, electronic email that you newsletter you get from me monthly, the county has a piece of property on Schrader adjacent to our planning and zoning building. And, um, just vacant lot, um, and it would certainly serve the purposes, it's large enough to put the structure there and also fence in a nice playground area for the children. And it's our building, we would share a parking lot, so we wouldn't have to build a parking lot to go with the transition facility because their activities are at night, typically, and so there wouldn't be a conflict with parking. And then adjacent to our lot are then homes, right? Um, which, and across the street is a cemetery. Um, we've talked to the City of Liberty and I I want to give a shout out to them. Uh, they're, you know, very collaborative with this on this project. They've agreed to waive any fees, any building fees or any permitting fees, uh, for the county, um, to do this structure, so we're grateful for that. We have worked with, um, Piper Wind, who is the architect under contract for the county and has worked on the LERC, um, to put together a proposal and working in with the judge and her staff. And we have gone out to three of our vendors, um, that are, um, verified vendors, construction companies, to get quotes to do a design build for this project. Um, unfortunately, all of them have come in over the five hundred thousand dollars. So, when we have discussion tomorrow night about ARPA funding, because we have some ARPA funding that is unallocated, I will be recommending to you all that we increase that budget, um, so that we can build this facility. Um, and so, and if the judge wants to talk about what the facility is, but it is larger so they can see more homes or more families in one setting, um, and meet their needs not only now but into the future. Um, so I wanted to lay that groundwork here while the judge is here and maybe she could talk a little bit about, again, what what happens in that facility and how is it used? It's also got a classroom in it, because as you know, um, I think Terry Hargrave, Dr. Hargrave, does a lot of training and and meetings and training, and so this will give her permanent space to do that. Um, and so, um, certainly want to get the judge an opportunity to talk about that. Um, but wanted to give you a heads up that that will be a discussion item, um, tomorrow night during the commission meeting on the ARPA funding.
Certainly. Um, and I don't know, I have a conflict in plan, so I don't know that I will be here tomorrow. Um, but I did speak with you, I believe everyone was here the last time that I spoke. Ms. Lawson, you were not there that night, but, um, a quick overview of what the transition facility does. In, um, juvenile cases, we're always trying to reunify families. And sometimes we have families that simply, um, someone had a substance use disorder or is homeless, um, but Children's Division is only able to allow one hour a week to try and reunify these families because they have so many different cases that they're handling. And, um, we offer in the transitions building, um, we can offer additional time for these parents to try and reunify with their children. We can have supervisors, we do have supervisors that are there to look and see how this is going, is this working, is this not working? In addition, the three judges who handle family court cases in Clay County, many times we order transitions for visits, just in a regular dissolution case or a modification case, if there's been instances of severe domestic violence. Um, sometimes we have sex offenders that can't, um, have the children in certain places, but the these are areas where we can try to reunify some of these families. We had been using the small building, the tiny house is what they called it, the floors are rotting in, they're falling in, it needs to be demolished. Um, and those bids came in well over five hundred thousand dollars, uh, just to try and repair that. It's also not ADA compliant. Um, so the building that we're looking at has a classroom that is all of our programming, um, that Office of Dispute Resolution handles. They would have a classroom. We would have, um, a couple different rooms that are large enough so that if a parent had more than one child, they would have enough room for all of their children to to visit together, which many times these children are split up into different foster homes. So, this allows an opportunity for them to see their siblings as well as their parent. And, um, it's about, Ms. Wright, how many square feet was that? I'm sorry, I can't...
It's fine.
I've I've reached the point where I need readers and I don't have them with me.
Um, so this particular structure, and we'll show you drawings and everything next week, is about two thousand square feet.
Um, so, so this would allow for that. We have been trying to find different places where we can have our programming, where we can have these visits, um, for the last almost two years also because we've not been able to use that building. In addition, other counties utilize transitions for their visits. So, we actually make money when we are having more of these visits because people from Platte County and other counties that don't have a facility like this will call us and they will actually order it in their juvenile cases and their dissolutions. So, we can charge per hour for them to utilize the facility as well. The hope had always been to that there would be an outdoor place for these children to get to play with their siblings, to be able to play with their parents. You know, a lot of these parents are doing a whole lot of things that are that are right, um, especially if they're parents that are utilizing this. And we want to just help, um, try to perpetuate that forward. It costs a lot of money to keep a child in foster care. So, um, if we, and and we have reduced that number significantly. However, if we can reunify more of these families, um, in a more expeditious way, that saves the taxpayers millions of dollars a year. So, um, this is the facility that, um, we have been working on for a very long time. As I said, the last time we were here, I have driven all over Clay County, we have contacted all kinds of realtors, we have had offers on different places, we have looked at rezoning different places so that we could purchase a property and, um, it's just not been feasible. Myself and my team have spent more hours than you all care to know doing this and we just haven't stopped. Um, this is great because it's close to law enforcement, because we have the shared parking lot and, um, it would be able to satisfy what we need for years and years and years to come. This isn't a Band-Aid solution, this would be a permanent solution. So, we are hopeful that you all will agree with that.
I I have a couple statements in question.
Sure.
First of all, uh, if this facility goes up where you're talking about going up, then, uh, what are we going to see from the surrounding neighbors as as we send out our stuff and say, we're gonna build this facility here? Do you anticipate any kind of problems from the neighboring people? I mean, we, that's always a reality as we unfortunately know.
Uh, correct. I I don't, from our conversations with the City of Liberty, we don't anticipate that being an issue.
Okay. All right, well, that's that's a good thing. Uh, the other thing is, and and I I think that this is a needed facility and I'm behind you a thousand percent to get it done, but I've got to tell you that I'm a little unhappy that we brought this forward in this particular meeting. I think this is something that all of that expense and all of whatever goes into making it a reality should have been done in, uh, like we did before, where we sit down and we discuss it and say, here's the pluses, here's the minuses, and then bring it forward to be approved or whatever happens. I I just, um, I've just got to say, or I'll blow up if I don't, that this was neither the time nor the place.
Well, that is what they're gonna do, right? Isn't that coming back to us at a different time?
Um, well, we'll talk about it again tomorrow night during the ARPA funding, right?
Yeah.
On what to do with ARPA funding as we wrap up that.
Yeah.
And then we will be coming back to the commission, uh, a week from now with the proposal and contracts.
So, this isn't an approval of that right now?
I understand that.
That's not what we're doing.
I understand that completely.
Okay.
I'm just saying, and I feel the way I feel and that's it.
No, I think it's just kind of a heads up more than anything else.
Yeah.
I appreciate it.
And Ms. Lawson, I'd be happy to, if you ever have any further questions, I was here, I think, for about an hour discussing this the last time that you were not here. So, we went through all of the statistics, all, but I was just trying to say everyone...
I got to see it all.
Everyone, the pain of hearing that all over again, but we spent, um, about an hour discussing all of the specifics and all of the the numbers. I just don't have those with me today because we did a deep dive a year ago.
No, no, and you're you're not at fault in this in any way, shape or form. I'm happy you you have the information and that you're looking at this as a very positive thing, because we need to get it done. We've been messing around with it forever and a day, probably spent a lot of money on that other, uh, site that didn't prove out for us. So, at any rate, I, yeah, I, uh, I do appreciate what you're up against.
Sure, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you have later or any other time. Yeah.
No.
All right, if there aren't any other questions of the judge, then thank you very much for being here.
Right, I have four to ten, so I'm going to be leaving.
Thank you, Judge Luke, for coming in at the end. So, did you have any comments that you want to share?
Take your time. I think we're finished. Oh, wonderful. What she said. Thank you guys for your time. Thank you.
All right, with that, I will introduce Prosecutor Zach Thompson, who will come in and up and talk about his accomplishments for 2024, um, goals for 2025 and items in his budget.
Zach Thompson with the Clay County Prosecutor's Office. I didn't get to see how the first one went, so I'm just gonna wing it. If I'm doing something improper, please just let me know. I want to begin by thanking, uh, the commission, the budget team, all the folks who worked hours and hours, days and nights preparing this budget. Uh, Prosecutor's Office is very pleased with what we've seen in it, uh, by and large. Uh, I think the commission, budget team recognizes the important work we do, so I just wanted to thank everybody involved with the process. Uh, to give everyone a baseline on just some of the numbers in the background of the Prosecutor's Office, we've seen, uh, year-to-date roughly, uh, fifty-two-hundred and a few more misdemeanor felony cases filed through our office. All of last year, uh, was less than that number and we still have, you know, an entire another month of cases to review. So, we are seeing, uh, an increase in the cases, uh, that that our office handles. I would also point out, uh, as part of our review of the budget, um, and and we understand that things are tied all over and that we have to do our best to live within our means. Uh, I would note that our our training budget, uh, was, uh, reduced somewhat. Um, we will do our best, uh, to to do, you know, accomplish our mission with the resources available, but I just wanted to point that out to everyone involved. So, uh, to talk about last year's, uh, goals, uh, from last year's slide, we don't have that slide up, but, uh, we've we've taken strides to complete our goals from last budget year. As far as our accomplishments this year, uh, we were able to add an additional victim advocate. We had prior to the addition of a second one, one for the entire office, right? And when you think about that, with Clay County being the biggest county in Missouri and there was a single victim advocate, uh, to navigate all the victims in our criminal cases through the process, it was, uh, a Herculean task, uh, and our victim advocate did absolutely the best she could. The addition of a second victim advocate helps us provide services to victims, so we appreciate that. We also were able to add a community support specialist. Uh, this is one of the things I'm really happy about in our office too, right? This individual was able to schedule, um, meetings with our office and the community to talk about a whole range of issues. Uh, we we've talked to folks about truancy issues in schools and how that results in negative outcomes for children and our entire community. We recently finished going to all the Mid-Continent libraries in the county, talking about, uh, the most common types of scams and how to protect them. We've also been to, uh, numerous community groups and talked about criminal law updates, right? Changes in the criminal law from Jefferson City, and we were able to educate folks in our community about those. Also, we added an additional assistant prosecuting attorney. Uh, as we talked about, uh, we've we're seeing more cases, right? And prior, um, to me taking office, I I think we were operating, uh, probably above the amount of cases any individual assistant prosecutor should handle, but I think we've taken strides to reduce that number so they were able to give each case the attention it deserves.
Zach, real quick, were you able to fill both the prosecutor positions, assistant prosecutor positions?
So, no. Uh, yeah, we've we encountered a few issues. For example, we extended a couple offers to recent graduates from law school who were unable to successfully pass the bar exam, right? So, that's been one issue. We are actively searching for someone to to fill that role. We made a couple offers for that position, you know, however, they didn't end up becoming attorneys. But, you know, that process is ongoing.
And I'm gonna ask you a very direct question that will probably come up later. I don't want specific employee, but in general, what's the starting salary for, if you were to hire a brand-new assistant prosecuting attorney, roughly?
I would, between sixty-seven and seventy thousand dollars a year.
Yeah, that's part of the problem, I think.
I think so. Um, these folks graduate with law school, often with a a large amount of debt.
Right.
Right? And it's it's hard to balance a debt payment with starting a family and especially with the cost of house support. There's a lot of, a lot of concerns.
We've got a lot of attorney friends, a lot of friends that are in law school or went to law school and none of them had started off for more than double that amount. And I think that's part of our problem.
Well, and I I, this is an opportunity to talk about the assistant prosecutors in our office, right? No one applies to the Clay County Prosecutor's Office because they want to become a wealthy attorney, right? These folks are civic-minded, they want to see their community be a safer, better place. So, I I, and that's one of the things we try to focus on when we're talking about staff retention, staff development, is, uh, we let folks fill their cups in different ways, right? Some people's cups are filled with money, right? And and others are filled with public service and I, and I think the folks who work in our office are the type of people whose cups are filled with with public service and doing good work.
Yeah, should appreciate that.
I'd like to ask a question also. While, yes, I think that is pretty low salary for that kind of an expertise and that kind of a, uh, uh, skill sets needed, how do we compare? And I, you may not have the numbers on this, but I'm thinking mainly in terms of other first-class counties. I don't think it's a fair comparison to compare, say, Clay County with a third-class county, just a different structure of finances, but, uh, is that an unusual level given a first-class county in this state?
I think after, and this commission, right, was responsive to my request during the last few budget cycles when it came to to adjusting our salary. I think after the last two adjudge adjustments and the one that's anticipated in this budget, I think it puts us in the running, right? So, and I'm sure, you know, county minister has talked about that the problem was you raise your salary, everyone raises your salary, and this is a constant race, right? I think this puts us in striking range. It used, the disparity used to be so much that you'd have to, you're a prosecutor and you could work at Platte County and make an extra ten thousand dollars a year doing the same work, right? And maybe even have a a smaller caseload. I think we've closed that gap. So, I think we're, right now, I don't know what Platte is gonna do with their budget, but with the adjustment that we we put in place on this cycle, I think it puts us really close to where they were last year. So, I don't know what they're gonna do this year.
And and the reason I ask is, you know, clearly, government is generally not going to be very competitive with the private sectors, just doesn't work that way. Um, I was thinking more in terms of our com, uh, our competitive position vis-à-vis the other first-class counties, which I think you've given, uh, good information on, so...
Sure, and I, and I think Jackson just pays more. I mean, I I think they do. I I don't have those numbers in front of me, but I think they they pay more, for sure.
I think I think one of the problems we face is, uh, in your office, you know, with attorneys, unlike, uh, say, a, um, a sheriff's deputy or a police officer, um, that's all public sector stuff. There's no, there's no private sector police officer, private sector, you know, sheriff's deputy. So we just compare to public-sector stuff. With you guys, you're competing with private-sector. When you're hiring people, you're hiring people who are competing not just with other county prosecutors, but they're also competing, you know, for, with private-sector jobs. And I think that makes the dynamic a little bit different. And so even if we are right there in the mid-range of other county prosecutors or whatever, I still think there's going to be a challenge for you. I still think there's going to be a challenge until we start treating our attorneys, whether they're, whether they're county attorneys or, you know, private or public or private attorneys. And so we start leveling the playing field a little bit more so that we can compete with the private, I mean, we're not going to be able to compete with the big, the big guys, but compete a little bit more so that when somebody comes out of law school, it's a fair shake to look at us. And let's face it, to your point, they're looking at public service, but they're looking at bottom dollar as well. I mean, everybody looks at the pay scale when they apply to a job. Everybody does. Might not be the first thing on the list, but they look at that. And when the pay scale for an attorney who's got a juris doctorate, who, who should be rewarded for that and paid for that, and they're seeing, hey, all these other places are rewarding twice as much as what the county's rewarding, any county's rewarding, that's a problem. And to me, public safety is the number-one priority of any government. Public safety is the number-one priority. And public safety includes not only the law enforcement side, but the prosecution side of it as well. And I would like to see us have, you know, some of the top prosecutors in our offices here in Clay County. And to do that, obviously, you have to, you have to pay. I'm not saying we don't have top prosecutors now, but, you know, we've got to stay competitive. And just know that that's in the back of my mind, and I know I'm preaching to the choir on this, but I guess I'm preaching to the rest of the county on this. I have been concerned about that since before I came in office, when I saw the numbers of what we're paying our prosecutors. And I knew when we increased for two more assistant prosecutors, that that'd be a problem filling them, and of course, it is. I think pay has a part to do with that. And I'm guessing that you probably hire some prosecutors, and they're here for a few years, and they go other places. Once you get them trained up, and they go go make some more money.
Well, I mean, there's certain paths with prosecutors, right? There's, there're folks who want to be a prosecutor forever, right? There's folks use the Prosecutor's Office, like you said, like, it's like almost a residency, right?
Right.
You're in court. It's an opportunity to try cases like no other position, right? So, yeah, five to seven years, and then folks have families and are thinking about other kind of considerations, and that's when you tend to lose folks. And as we have this conversation, I think it's also important to note, this isn't just about assistant prosecutors, right? The backbone of our office is our support staff.
Absolutely.
Right? And those folks' salary need to be part of the discussion as well, because of the important nature of the stuff they do. When you think of the kind of material they're in charge of, right, we're talking life and death situations, depriving people of their freedom by putting them in jail as a result of criminal conduct, they handle some pretty weighty stuff on a regular basis. So I want to make sure that our support staff is part of the conversation as well.
Thanks.
All right. So in regard to employer of choice, we implemented whole-office training programs. We meet or began meeting individually with support staff, finding out what their needs are, and structuring training that meet those needs and the needs of our office. We're putting an emphasis on cross-training folks. When I first took office, there was a lot of compartmentalized information and institutional knowledge with certain individuals. So we've made a priority to spread that out. So, you know, everybody is able to do, you know, more than just one job. We have implemented employee retention initiatives. You know, what we're talking about, we talked about how, you know, there's only so much money to go around. So we've done everything we can to make our work environment, you know, attractive to our employees. You know, I don't know if you saw, our office proudly was successful in decorating for Halloween such that we won the first rotating trophy of the year, right? You know, and that was our support staff decorating. If you haven't watched the video, it's, they went all out. It's great, right? And building that kind of team atmosphere is important for us, so we've done that. We've also, and I have Grant Kelly with us to talk briefly about the initiatives we've done in child support.
Good morning, Commissioner. Can you, can you hear me?
Yeah.
So I was able to speak to you earlier this year about some of the impressive performance that our office has been able to accomplish over the last fiscal year. I'd like to reiterate that I continue to be proud of that performance, right? But we do have, that's, we're not resting on our loyals by any means. Our offices evaluated our performance, and we're making efforts to improve that. As a result of those, that evaluation, we've got a few performance improvement initiatives, including an audit and improvement initiative, which was put in place by our staff members. These are the numbers that are evaluated by the state as well as the feds to determine what our performance is that are related to child support. So those kinds of things include the establishment of cases, the enforcement of cases, ensuring that they're paid properly, those types of things, that modifications, when appropriate, are handled within the proper timeframes. We also, coupling with some of the impressive performance that's been, that's occurred in the burning court program out of Division Eight, which is a diversion track for those child support cases, we're looking at a diversion initiative, which would be an alternative to court enforcement, which my discussions with the state that are related to that issue, they're encouraged by that. This would allow our cases to be enforced with individuals being under contract without taking up time and resources from the courts for that enforcement purpose. We're looking at a warrant initiative, which would allow the facilitation of payments from performance of initiatives such as the amnesty program, which has occurred every year for the last seven years, which has allowed individuals to reengage with the court system because they're not in fear of outstanding warrants. We're taking a look at the warrants that are outstanding on our child support cases in the hopes of establishing something that's not quite as lenient as the amnesty program, but something that is reasonable in accommodating those warrants to get them back reengaged, and also put funds in the hands of our custodial parents. We also have and are currently in development of an outreach initiative. I'm very excited about this particular initiative. Mr. Thompson has talked about the community engagement individual that we have in our office, utilizing her as a staff member and her expertise to develop an initiative to educate the public as to the resources that we have in our office that may not be utilized as something that we'll be working towards in the future. We also, this last year, we were able to evaluate a previous bond capture initiative, which our office initiated about eighteen months ago. This is initiative to capture bonds on child support cases. I'm thrilled to report that in the last eighteen months, we've been able to capture over one hundred thousand dollars based on that initiative, and those distributions have gone to custodial parents in our community. Are there any questions? Thank you, Commissioner.
Thanks, Derek. All right, moving on to infrastructure. When I first took office, we had a real difficult time coming up with reliable numbers as to the number of cases that were reviewed in our office. Certain cases were inputted into our electronic tracking system, other cases weren't. So what we've done is we've taken steps to actually put all of the information, CarpeL is the name of our prosecution software. So we're putting our cases into CarpeL so that we can actually use that to print out reports about the number of cases we handle, the types of cases we handle, the resolutions on those cases. So, you know, that's a relatively young endeavor. It takes a while to get that data fully populated, but we are well in the process of doing that. That's how I was able to talk to you generally about the number and the increase of cases that we're having, right? Because you could use the court systems, but that isn't necessarily an accurate depiction of what gets to our office, right? Because if cases get sent back for further investigation or there decline, that information doesn't show up on the court system. They also classify cases a little bit differently than the way we do inside our office. We're also using advanced technology to assist in the prosecution of cases, right? When I first started prosecuting, we had a rotary projector, right, that we would actually make slides for, right? And as an intern, it was my job to operate those. So, you know, we've come a long way, but there's also work to be done, right? We are successfully prosecuting cases, but I think we could do better. So we are implementing, testing trial presentation software, and we're going to do that on a case, and we're going to see how that works. And if it meets all our needs and does a good job, we're going to expand it. We also, cognizant of, you know, training expenses, right? Traditionally, when I first became a prosecutor, you would go to the conference that was held twice a year, and you would get all your CLE, right? That's still a good program. However, we've implemented in-house CLE programs for assistant prosecutors, because we do have, in addition to younger, newer prosecutors, we have experienced prosecutors in our office. So we're utilizing their knowledge and their talent to educate the younger attorneys, and we also get CLE credit through the Missouri bar. And that's not just our office, too. Recently, we partnered with Platte County, and so it was a joint effort, right? So we had Platte County prosecutors teaching and learning. We had Clay County prosecutors teaching and learning. We also had representatives from law enforcement teaching the assistant prosecutors about the job they do. We also, and if you remember correctly, I came before this commission and asked for a little bit of money to pay for the training. That being said, right, the DWI court program is a communal effort, right? This is by no means just the Prosecutor's Office, right? Regina Funk with the courts, this commission, Judge Alexander, who was the judge presiding over that program, they all worked really, the entire treatment court team, they spent a lot of time, right, went to a different state to go to training for this treatment court. So I think that's an excellent representation of how we in the Prosecutor's Office like to approach our jobs. We worked well with a whole host of different organizations and individuals to bring that program to Clay County to address the issue of DWIs in our community. And then also, Mr. Kelly, I think he came and talked briefly, so I don't know if we're going to go over the increased child support distributions already. You, I think we had a brief presentation from him at a previous meeting. So if there are any questions, we'd be happy to answer them. All right. So our goals for the next year is to expand training and support to address the mental and physical well-being of staff. Secondary trauma is a real thing, right? The assistant prosecutors in our office look at a lot of serious cases and a whole wide range of human tragedy that they're exposed to on a regular basis. So I want to be cognizant of that because prosecutors, like any other profession dealing with high stress, can burn out. So I want to make sure that we address that with the assistant prosecutors and the support staff who deal with some pretty weighty issues on a regular basis, to make sure they're getting the kind of support they need to continue their good work. We're also going to expand proactive efforts with community outreach initiatives. I like to be proactive in the Prosecutor's Office, right? So often, we encounter individuals after they're the victim of a crime, after something terrible's happened to them, and then we're left in a position to try to put Humpty Dumpty back together again. Far better for us to educate folks about different types of crime and how to protect against them, because I'd much rather do that work and never have a criminal case if I'm able to do that. So we're going to expand on those efforts, and we're also going to work on improving our victim services. You know, there's certain types of cases where I think victim services play a giant role in securing a successful prosecution. Often, we encounter cases where a victim is cooperative at the beginning of a case, and then as we move along in the process, they become less cooperative. I think we can address that and through better services and better communication between our office and them, and connecting victims with the services they need. So we're going to put a focus on that. We've created a working group with our victim advocates and prosecutors who handle certain types of cases to try to come up with ways and procedures where we can keep folks cooperative and involved with the criminal process. We're also going to add a paralegal support position. As, you know, as the caseload grows, as assistant prosecutors have more cases, and as the demands on the prosecutors increase, I think it's going to be excellent and efficient to have a paralegal in our office. Hopefully, at some point, if it works out well, more than one. The goal being that these paralegals can do quasi-legal work and free up the assistant prosecutors to do the job, you know, that they're designed to do. The salary adjustment of eight percent to address the market issue, I think that's an excellent first step. I'm looking forward to seeing that for everybody who works in our office. We're going to continue to enhance our workplace culture and initiatives. We, it's our understanding, for example, that there is a Christmas decoration contest as well. Our decorations are going up. I think we're definitely going to be in the running. So we're going to, we're going to make sure that the folks in our office feel supported the best way we can. We're also going to implement some structural training and mentoring for our young prosecutors. When I first became a prosecutor, it was basically, you know, you're a prosecutor now, here's your caseload, go get them. I think in today's environment, it's better to have that mentor relationship between a more experienced prosecutor and a younger prosecutor, and to foster that and have some formalized training for newer prosecutors. So we've already taken steps to do that, and we look to expand on those, you know? And we're also really excited about expanding our office area when the time comes. You asked about if we're able to fill that assistant prosecutor position. If we were able to, that person would not have an office, right, at this point, right? If we hired that person tomorrow, they would not have an office. So we're looking forward to having the build-out, and I just want everyone to be on the same page on this thing. With that build-out, as we continue to grow, right, if we, even with the build-out, we're going to add, you know, three offices, right, and maybe like a trial preparation room or something like that, right? You hire a prosecutor, two more, another victim advocate, you know, you're already full up again. So I just want to make everybody aware of that, but we are excited to have that done. We're going to keep on working on the software redaction requirements. You know, the rules on CaseNet changed about redaction stuff. That is an area fraught with peril for people who aren't paying attention to the details. There are requirements placed upon attorneys who make filings in court about certain information, and it's not supposed to be up there. And we file a lot of cases and a lot of paperwork. So we're working hard to make sure that we leverage that technology to make sure that we meet our ethical and legal obligations. You know, we're also going to keep on working on data collection. I hope next year to provide you with even more details about the number and types of cases and the resolutions we're having on those cases, right? And then the fileless status. One of our goals when we spoke last year was to go fileless, right? That is still a goal. We were making steps towards that. However, during that process, we discovered some serious issues when it comes to data storage. Thirty years ago, you know, police officers didn't necessarily even have dash cams or body cameras. The storage of all that digital information comes with a cost, right? Every case now comes with a significant amount of electronic evidence that needs to be stored and retained and made available to defense attorneys. So we're going to, that's been a challenge to the fileless efforts, but we're still working on ways to address that. And I think we're going to have some partners at the state level, too. I think there's some legislation that's going to provide funding, hopefully, for some kind of central data storage for everyone.
May I interject on that point?
Sure.
Zach, how long do you have to keep that data?
Well, so it depends on the case and the resolution, right? And it's a, it's a, it's a long time, right? And I don't have, I don't, I can get that information for you exactly.
I want you to know.
But it's a significant amount of time, right? At least through the appeals, right? And those appeals can last a significant amount of time.
Right. So, I mean, essentially, you may have a data cam or a, something off of a policeman's camera. You may have to keep that years.
For sure.
As that makes its way through, and you multiply that by hundreds.
Or thousands.
And thousands. And so your issue is one of exponential growth of need to be able to store that.
Well, and if you think about it, I mean, just think about if a police officer's respond to a shooting, and, you know, a dozen police officers respond to the shooting, right? They all have dash cams, they all have body camera.
Right.
Right? And they're, and they're on for hours, right? And you do that over and over again, and it's a significant amount of data, and they need to be stored.
So the hope is that the state will come with some solution to help in that storage, or?
Yes, that's the hope. There's a statewide prosecutor association, and they're actively talking with, with folks down in Jefferson City about how best to deal with that. I don't know how much relief we're going to see. I think, I think a lot of that's being considered for smaller counties without the resources that are available to us, but we hope to be part of that process, for sure.
Gotcha. Thank you very much.
All right. Talked about the technol- Talked about the technology challenges and data collection, fileless. So yeah, we are going to continue using the, the knowledge and resources within our office and neighboring offices for training opportunities. Like I said, the Platte County, Clay County Joint CLE, in my opinion, was a great success. We've had great feedback from the prosecutors who attended, and I think that's definitely something we can build upon and maybe even add additional counties to that, to that training. All right? Does anybody have any questions?
I have a question. How, how many employees do you current, did you say you currently have?
I, we have sixteen assistant prosecutors, myself, and then roughly, and I could get the exact number.
Fifty-three.
Fifty-three altogether.
Fifty-three altogether?
Yeah.
And then what are their plans for an increase in that? You've already got your assistant prosecutor, correct?
Well, I think we have a position that's yet to be filled, right? So we have a position that needs to be filled. And I'm, and I want to be respectful and cognizant of the issues this commission's facing when they're having to make difficult budget decisions, right? But yeah, that, that number will only increase over time, right? I, you know, we'd love to have, add paralegal, and in addition, paralegals. Love. I'd love another victim advocate, and in my opinion, when you add more prosecutors across the office, their caseload will go down, allows them to pay more attention to the cases than you have, so that they can, crime, get the, you know, the services that they deserve.
Okay, thank you.
So the 2025 budget does include a new position for the prosecutor's office, one paralegal.
Okay.
One paralegal is a new position that is being added to the prosecutor's office that's being in the proposed budget.
Okay.
So I have a quick question for you, Zach. You know, at the federal level, we're going to see, I think in the next four years, they've, they've made it pretty obvious, a lot of enforcement on illegal aliens. I use that term illegal aliens because that's a legal term, and no matter what term I use, someone's going to be offended, so I'll just use the legal term. Illegal aliens is going to be particularly a focus on illegal aliens that commit crimes. Will that have any impact at all on your office, do you think, or is that all going to be at the state, federal level stuff?
Like, when it comes time to, I'm not sure I understand the question. There are certain state laws when it comes to, to transporting illegal aliens, right? We've never had a case like that presented to us, right? Our job is to enforce the law, so we'll review every case that comes to our office. But if you're talking about, I'm not, I'm not sure I.
Well, so, so at the national level, there's all, obviously, there's going to be a big effort to round up and get rid of, and when I say get rid of, deport illegal aliens, particularly those who are involved in criminal activity or have been involved in criminal activity in the past. That's been clear, if anybody watches the news, that's what the Trump administration wants to do. But they're probably going to need help from local, state, local levels, and I don't know what that looks like, what that means, or even if you do or not, or if that impacts us at all, or, I'm trying to think, budget-wise, will that have any impact on our budget, or are we not concerned about that?
I'm not sure it will have much impact on the prosecutor's office budget. It may affect, you know, the sheriff's department, right? They house the folks that we charge with crimes who are in custody as a result of those crimes, right? Traditionally, we don't receive immigration status information when we receive a criminal case, right? Like, it, it, it doesn't come with an alert or anything like that, right? We just get a case presented to us. Sometimes we find out after the fact, when we're contacted by federal authorities, that that person is here illegally, right? But, but that's not information we get on the front end.
Okay. All right, thank you.
I think suffice to say that, you know, however the issue develops, you folks will certainly be cooperative with the state and federal employee, officials. So I mean, I don't think that's too much in question, because you've always been good cooperation with different levels of government, so I'm not sure we can predict where that's going, but certainly you will be, you know, working to the extent that it is required.
For sure. I mean, my job as a prosecutor is to enforce the law, so I will certainly follow the law.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Thanks.
Well, we seem to have lost a few people. Would you like to take a break?
For a few minutes before we carry on. I see some ahead.
Good, I did. We want to say, what, fifteen minutes? Does that sound right, or?
How about ten?
Sound good to everybody? We'll reconvene about ten till?
Pardon me, ten? Quite a bit, yeah. Okay. Okay, yeah.
So we'll be back at.
It's up to you. If you want to keep going, we're happy.
Be to keep going, but.
I think, I think ten minutes, just to give everybody a little bit of a stretch, is probably a good thing. So let's reconvene at ten, ten minutes before the hour.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm going to go ahead and wait till it's at 10 o'clock because even though we're not adjudicating anything, it's usually not a good idea to start meetings early when they're public meetings. So I'll give it one minute and then we'll go ahead and reconvene.
All right, well, while you're waiting for a minute, I would ask, we're going to jump ahead a couple of slides and go to employee relations to accommodate a schedule that Kim has, and so she's going to have to leave a little early. So we wanted to make sure she had the opportunity to go over her information with the commission and answer any questions that you had. So if you want to flip forward a little bit to the employee relations slide, we will cover those few slides and then we'll go back.
And that was sufficient time to bring us up to 10 minutes before the hour. We will reconvene. Please proceed.
Thank you, commissioners. The next functions that we're going to talk about is the employee relations. And there are two departments assigned into this particular category, our human resources department and then our benefits fund. And so you see here, human resources, the proposed budget is 20% less than the current 2024 budget. And the reason is, what's included in the 24 budget was the funds to do the compensation and classification study. That was a one-time event, and so you won't see those costs associated in the 2025 proposed budget, which is reflective of that reduction. In our benefits, you'll see that there is an increase of 20%. There's a couple of reasons for that. Number one is we're sort of trying to true up our workers' comp audits, where we've had to come in at the year end. And so we're planning for that in that fund, along with the impact on our salary increases you're going to see in benefits. And then obviously, as you know, we fully fund every position that we have for the entire year, including their benefits and health insurance. And so you'll see that as an increase. And as you may recall, one of the things the commission approved this year is for the county to contribute towards dental insurance for a base plan. And so that's also factored in. So overall, you can see that that particular category was up 17%. Again, if you look at how the categories in which the funds are spent, 79% of it is in personnel. That is, you know, not only is it in wages, but it's also benefits, which is why that's substantial. And then 21% of it is in contractual. And with that, I'll turn it over to Human Resources Director Kim Callahan to talk about their accomplishments and their goals for next year, and any questions you have about their budget.
Morning, commissioners.
There we go.
All right. So right now, we are in the thick of our compensation and classification study. We are fine tuning the numbers, the open positions that are budgeted that are not filled. So we're getting close, but we're not quite there. But I think we're going to end up with some really great information from them to go working forward on that. Right now, we have increased participation in the high deductible healthcare plan. Every year, it helps us save money with Blue Cross Blue Shield when we increase that participation. This year, we implemented the onsite counselor. She has her own office. And right now, it started at 25 participation, but now it's at 34. One of the main things that this counselor is seeing is job stress and family stress. We get a report of, you know, what's going on. So it's a good thing, and we're encouraging our employees to use, utilize her, you know, when it's needed. So I know we've talked about, you know, we want to make healthcare, people be aware that it's provided, and it's okay to say, I need some help. Right now, especially at Christmas time and over Thanksgiving, that's the most stressful period of the year, money-wise and stressed with your families. But the other thing that's not on here is we implemented the paid parental leave program, thanks to you guys approving that and for Commissioner Thompson to bring that forward. So I'm going to have a detailed report that will be on the commission report next week. But right now, this year, we had eight participants. We had two females and six males. Okay, and I'll have details next week on departments and such. But it's been very well received, and the sheriff's department is elated with it. And they're like, can we cut the time period down to six months instead of a year? But we look at other, Jackson County, Gladstone, we look all around to see what everybody else is doing. And this is interesting, the city of Liberty did not have one. They're implementing one in '25. But their program is going to be six weeks, paid every three years. So I thought that was interesting. You can only use it once every, you know. So ours is eight weeks per year, paid parental leave. So it's been a good thing and well received. But I'll have a detailed report about the cost analysis and all of that for you next week. This year, we had our first wellness fair for our employees. We had it here in this building. We had 17 vendors. We had Blue Cross Blue Shield, Delta Dental. We had a chiropractor here. We had a foot doctor that came. We had the public health department. We had natural grocers. We just had a variety of stuff for the employees. We had a little over 100 participants employees come through, but it was well received and something we look forward to doing every year for our employees. And it was also the chance for them to talk to the Blue Cross Blue Shield people, Delta Dental. We had a SERF rep there that they were able to talk to and get information. Let's see. So as far as our 25 goals, thank you. Our wellness programs, right now, the participation is about 27, 39%. We have several different programs that we use throughout the year to encourage our employees, their wellness. We had, at our, let's see, we had, the largest participation was, of course, our healthy lunches and breakfast that we send out to each department. And our wellness fund pays for that. And it's also a morale booster, a time for them to get together and talk. And that's our highest participation. This month, we have a race, the candy cane race here in Liberty. And we have about 30 employees that are signed up for that. Let's see. We're also working on reducing worker compensation claims through training. We've gone to each department and trained the supervisors on workers' comp. You know, right now, in '23, we had 65 claims. And right now, at the end of November, we're at 60 claims. But if you look at our workers' comp report, the money that's going out is much lower than it has been in the last few years, as far as claims. So it's a good thing, and it's one thing that we're working on, is bringing down our compensation, our workers' comp claims. So like I said, we're fine tuning the comp and classification study. This year, we're planning on updating our orientation and onboarding program. You know, once they get to the department, they're kind of let go. But what we want to do is start checking in with them. 30, 60, 90 days, how are things going? That's one of the first things that we're going to start doing with our new hires. We want to try and reduce the timeframe to fill vacant positions. And actually, it's getting a lot better now. Like, right now, we have six work, six jobs posted. And depending on the job, we just had a office job that we, within three days, we had 60 applications. But our CDL workers, you know, we're lucky to, we are getting a few more applications there. I've seen that turn around a little bit. But it just depends on the position. And the sheriff's department, I think with them changing, you know, raising the detention salary, that's going to help them so much.
Kim, what are you doing to reduce the timeframe to fill the vacancies?
Well, we're changing up where we put the ads, how we, how we word the ad. And another thing we have is with our program through ADP, our recruitment program, if we have a job that's posted there, like right now, we have a painter that's been on there for 300 days, which brings down our number, right? So we're going to start taking down ads, changing them up. It's like, obviously, this isn't what you want, so we have to change it up. And we have to look at every position that way. And the CDL changes are because we keep that evergreen is what we call it. It's an ongoing ad. But as far as, like I said, it depends on the position. We can get it filled like that if it's an office position. That was in the juvenile department.
So do we wait for a position to open up before we advertise for it?
Yes.
A vacancy?
Yes.
Is there, is there any way to do that sooner than those anticipate vacancies and start out whether it's, you know, whether the department says, hey, we anticipate we're going to have two vacancies in the next, you know, six months or whatever?
Right. If we get a status change form that somebody is leaving, or like retiring, right? Some people give 30 days. Some people give two weeks. We can go ahead and post the position. You know, a lot of times, they want them to come in and work and train with them, like with our director, our Roden Bridge director.
Right.
You know, that's, that's good for them to be able to do. But that was another position that was very hard to fill. It just, you know, there's not a lot of engineers out there, Tom. That, so it just depends on the position.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Uh, let's see. And we are going to continue to contribute to our employee dental plan. That was well received this year. Every year it opened a moment, people would say, you know, when are they going to start? Because they were paying the full dental benefit. You know, so we're contributing a small amount, but every little bit helps. And, you know, our employees were happy about that. So I've heard good things. We also just completed our employee engagement survey, Commissioner Lawson. I have that information, and I'll be getting that out in the next couple of weeks also. It's just like everything's coming together at once. But it'll be good for you to see what employees are saying and what they think and where we can improve. And we'll do it every year, and hopefully, you know, improve and improve the employee engagement. So, let's see. And that's, that's what I've got.
I did have a question, and I'm forgiving Kim if I missed you saying it, but as far as the, the comp and classification study, when do you expect to be in a position to make recommendations or to execute what's in there?
I would say by next month. I mean, we've been going back and forth, and we're fine tuning positions that we've got budgeted but aren't filled. And so it's just like, I would say.
Well, that's just the first step of it that we're doing, right? Because we're a complicated system. And so taking that information, the consultant is, and saying, okay, based on the market study, what grade should they be in? And what are they making after January 1st, after the 5% or the 8% or 7,000? And so then, so we're kind of scrubbing all that data to make sure that piece is it correct. But the second step that we haven't really looked at then is the classification aspect of it.
Yeah.
Do we agree with where they put the positions in the grade? And does that make sense internal equity? So that piece of it hasn't even been started yet. So I would agree with Kim that it is either going to be sometime in January or early February before we actually have a plan. Because then we've got to get out to departments and say, does the internal equity in your department make sense? Do you agree with this? So
Right.
There's quite a few steps to go through before we actually bring forward to the commission a proposal.
Yeah.
Which is why we said in the 2025 budget, we want to do the 5% cost of living in January. We want to do the 8%, the $7,000 for the detention officers. So that will go into place January, even regardless that where we are with the pay study.
Right.
And then we have a lump sum amount of money, about a little over a million dollars, sitting there to be utilized
Right.
To implement whatever the study brings forward.
Right. And so there's a lot of assumptions that go with putting that, you know, kind of parking that million dollars there. And I guess the reason for my question is simply beginning to set some expectations for us as far as how do these things sort of unfold? And I think you've given a good example of here's the internal things that have to occur. But I might just suggest whenever, whenever you get something back, setting, setting some timeframes as to how that unfolds, which in my mind, I would not be surprised if this is a four to six-month deal, by the time you unfold everything and it all works its way through the system.
Right. Because there, there is the scrubbing of the data, that this makes sense, then out to the departments and office holders, does this make sense for your team? Then it's put back together. And then the dollars are put saying, what does that look like? And then there'll be work sessions with the commission.
Right.
Because, you know, it really was being proposed as a step plan, which we've never had before.
Right.
And how do you, how, you know, what is the philosophy on that when it goes to what do you fund annually, a step? And then how do you add market changes to all of that? So there is a whole complicated aspect of what this is.
Those are the things you have to do before you spend $1 out of the money you've parked. And so just understanding how that will unfold, I think, is important for us to know, which then, for everyone else to know for that matter.
And, and I, because I'm sure we have employees listening, while we have that million dollars parked, we also have to take into consideration, when we make those raise changes, it also impacts benefits.
Right.
So we won't be able to put the full million, 61,000 in wages, because we've got to think it will impact FICA, and it'll impact SERF, and it'll impact loggers. And so we have to keep that into consideration also
Yeah.
As we do this implementation. So a lot of work has been done, a lot of work is going on right now, and there's a lot of more work to do
Yeah.
Before we get something to bring to the commission for your consideration.
Yeah. And I appreciate that. I just, I just wanted to set that expectation at least of you get a study, or you get the results of that study, that does not necessarily mean you start writing checks or giving everybody raises. So the more that detail as you have it and create it, I think is very helpful to set expectations across the organization. But I do appreciate the work that you've done here and on that study.
When do we expect that study to come back, approximately? I know you can't say.
And again, I think it's probably before it comes back, before the commission, I say it's probably going to be sometime in, you know, if the planets align, maybe end of January, 1st of February, before we're back in front of the commission going with the consultant that says, you know, here's what we've done, here's what we've, here's our recommendation, here's what it'll cost, here's what the future looks like. Because again, you cannot, you can't implement a change. And this is a whole change structure on how we do this. And so, you know, you can't just look at it in a vacuum. But then what is, you know, is it sustainable going forward? Because that's going to be key also, and managing expectations of our employees.
I think if the planets align, it comes back after, what, February 15th?
I think you're exactly right. I think it does. Are there any other questions for Kim? Okay, great. Thank you, Kim.
All right. Thank you.
Please bear with me as I kind of go backtrack here a little bit. So we're going to go back to where, after the prosecutor's presentation in your slide deck, and we're going to talk about the governmental functions. And we kind of have grouped all these departments together. There are seven functions here that we're looking at. And so the county commission's budget is here, the election commission, the county elections, the board of equalization, the county counselor, government association memberships, and the administration department budget. So I'm going to kind of walk through each one of these and give you some highlight. And so again, that's the chart with the numbers. And to the right, you can see that based on the total for this particular governmental function, 69% of it is in contractual, and then 31% of it is in personnel. So we're going to start with the county commission's budget. And I know no elected body likes to see their department budget go up, nor double-digit, but this goes up 20%. And as we talked about earlier, And as we talked about earlier, in the past, the county has had a department called outside agencies, and included in that outside agency funding was the county's obligation to the Missouri University Extension. And so since we don't have outside funding and don't have that line item, we moved the obligation, the contractual obligation to the university extension into the county commission's budget. So that is why you see a 20% increase. And just for your information, the amount that is being allocated to the university extension for next year is $86,350.
On the, the county counselor, the 17% increase?
Yes.
Is that additional employees for the county?
No. The county counselor is the, the attorney, Kevin Graham and his staff. So their, their contract is they get increases, whatever county employees get at 5% they get. But what recognizes that 17% increase is an increase in outside legal counsel, because we have ongoing litigation in which we have hired outside counsel to accommodate those litigations.
Yeah.
And so you actually, we came to the commission this year to move money around to increase this year's budget for the county counselor because of those agreements. And so those, the litigation is still going on, and so we anticipate that those additional dollars will be needed for outside counsel.
And, and that's something special that our counselor doesn't handle. It, it's something that a specific legal group needs to take care of.
That is correct. You know, sometimes attorneys are just like doctors, and they're, they have their, their specialty and their niches. This particular litigation, as you may recall, the county engaged a law firm in St. Louis that specializes in this type of litigation.
Quick question. Our county counselor is contracted, right? He's not a county employee?
The, well, yes.
Kevin Graham.
Right. But the, the way his contract is written is such that it just is perpetual, and in that contract, his contract doesn't come up for me. No one was the commission wants to do that. And it's written such that those attorneys and the county counselor get the same salary adjustment that our employees do.
Really?
As what, what was that last that you said?
They get the same salary adjustment. So for example, in this particular budget, since we're proposing a 5% cost of living adjustment, the attorneys would also get that.
Okay. And is that contract, an at-will contract?
Certainly. The council, the commission can do whatever you want with those contracts.
Or if he wanted, he wanted to say, I'm tired of you guys and walk away. You never do that. But if he did, he has that, there's no problem with breaking of the contract, right?
I'm sorry, what?
No problem in the breaking of the contract from either party?
I have not read that contract. So I can't answer what is in the contract with regard to that. You know, certainly attorneys are not something that you just want to flip a switch on and off. There has to be, you know, a transition. So you'd have to have those kind of conversations if there is something you wanted to do.
So is our lead legal counsel, is he at the top of our salary range?
His, his pay grade for the county counselor is, yes, current, in our current plan, he's in the pay, same pay grade as the county administrator.
Right.
But there are, so we have the county counselor, we have an assistant county counselor, and then we have a counselor that is with the planning commission, all out of the same office.
But so, okay, so the assistant, the assistant county counselor, so we're paying his salary as well?
Yes. There is a, a salary amount that will also be adjusted based on the agreement of going up 5%. And so while that assistant county counselor will fill in for our county counselor, but there are a lot of things that he does behind the scenes, working with our teams and our departments on contracts and other things that come up that our county counselor doesn't have the time, you know, defers to the assistant county counselor to do. So while you may not see the assistant, there's a lot of work that he does behind the scenes in working with our departments.
Would one of those lists be, for instance, last night, we had a P&amp;Z meeting, and that was staffed by counsel?
That, P&amp;Z is always staffed by counsel. That is not the assistant county, well, I don't know what his technical title is, but he is always, he is our P&amp;Z expert, and he shows up at all the planning and zoning. That is not the assistant county counselor. Assistant county counselor is Jason.
And it's not the entire office staff?
No.
It's, it's him, and then like the gentleman that was here last night for planning and zoning?
Correct.
Filled in?
Right.
Okay. They kind of share the responsibility.
Right. So we kind of jumped. I'd like to talk a little bit about the election commission. As you can see, their budget is going up 21%. There's a couple of reasons for that, and there's also an item on tomorrow night's agenda about this year's budget that I'll also, you know, talk about tomorrow night. But for next year's budget, they are proposing an increase. The first of all, and that's driving a little bit of tomorrow night's costs, is they have implemented new equipment, voting equipment. It is sort of, it's a lease program, and so next year is the first full year of that. There were some costs this year of entering into that lease to buy that new equipment, but then 2025 does reflect the first full annual lease payment. They also, the election board are increasing salaries for their employees, and they also have implemented a program in 2025, microfilming and digitizing all the voter material. So those are some of the things that have reflective of the increased cost for the 25 budget. With regard to county elections, this is the county's cost for elections that occur in the county. And so you see that we really kind of just put our standard amount that we put in on an annual basis. And so it is, 25 is higher than what is in 24s. This covers election costs. It also does include costs if the county should choose to put a county ballot before the voters. You know, so it's just there as a placeholder, doesn't mean that you have to do that, doesn't know, you know, what you want to do, but it is there in case there is a decision in 2025 to take something before the voters. One of the things when we were putting the budget together was, last year, we'd had some conversations, and the auditor had actually done a report about the marijuana sales tax, right? The special sales tax that could be implemented. Commission discussed that, and because we knew that there was litigation going on with regard to whether a county could stack sales tax on top of a city sales tax, which is also on account of the state's special sales tax, and we're talking about recreational marijuana sales at the dispensaries. And so the commission decided at that point, since there was ongoing litigation, you chose not to jump on the wagon, as many counties across the state of Missouri did, and took it to their voters and got their tax approved. Jackson County is one, St. Charles County is one, St. Louis County is one. They all have voter approval and have been collecting the marijuana sales tax. The appellate court has just recently made a decision, and basically, their interpretation of the ballot language that changed the Missouri constitution does not allow counties to stack on a city's sales tax. And so for those counties that have put it into play, they're all kind of, we don't know what's going to happen, we don't know if we're going to have to pay it back. Now, we, we were at the Missouri Association of Counties last week, there was a lot of discussion about that, and for those counties, and what are they going to be doing? And is there going to be an appeal? Where everyone thinks there probably will be appeal on the appellate decision to take it up to the Supreme Court, because some of those counties have actually already spent those dollars. Some of them didn't, they just kind of banked it, but some have spent it. We are fortunate that we are not in that position, and so, you know, kind of wait till the dust settles and see what happens at the appellate court. So, but when we put the budget together, the appeal decision had not come down yet. And so we placed that in there in case something happened and the appellate decision was in favor of counties putting on the tax, and then it gave the commission flexibility if you wanted to take something forward to the commission or to the voters. Board of Equalization, again, very small budget, talking very small dollars. County counselor, we ought to have talked about. Government Association membership. So these are actually the memberships that we pay into the chambers and some of the others. And so it's given us, you see, it's a reduction, because we've actually, now that we've got some data, we've had the opportunity to true up what those actual costs are. So we reduced that budget. In administration, it's going up 7%. Couple of things are driving that. One of the major ones is for the last two years, when we put back into place tourism and marketing and got our DMO status back, our wages for our personnel and the costs associated with marketing the county was actually paid out of ARPA funds. And so because we know ARPA is coming to an end, we have fully funded that in the administration, in the general fund for that. The other thing that is contributing to that increase in administration is in our risk management. We're increasing in our risk management because we want to replace all the AED devices across the county. They have met their life expectancy, and so, you know, those are wonderful tools to have available for public safety, and so we're including costs to do that across the county. And just some of the highlights for this particular operation, and I'm not going to read all of them, because there's a lot, because it represents you all, and you all touch everything that all the other departments do, and you're going to hear about some of these. But certainly establishing the fiscal policies that the commission just recently did, receiving the budget award for the third year with, at the auditor's office. We held two civic academies for the first time in the county's history, and we think that's been successful and want to continue that next year. Updated some of our chapters in the Code of Ordinances, 33, 34, and 90, to align with the charter and also the strategic plan. Some of the things, obviously, we talked about the commission voluntarily for the second year in a row, rolled back the general mill levy. One of the goals during the strategic plan was a finalist for the Royal Stadium. We've launched our GIS department this year, and we supported the initiative for the U.S. Bicycle Riot 51. And the commission reestablished the building code commission, which is needed as we look at our building codes, which is a project for 2025. In safety and well-being, you added the assistant prosecutors' positions this year that you talked about. And after several years of discussion at the county level of having the other counties contribute to the cost of the public defender, I will say we successfully initiated agreements with three other counties to help cover those costs. The public defender is now in their new space and is very, very happy at that location. So appreciate everybody's work on that. Employer of choice, we kind of talked about that already, things that we've done for recruitment and retention this year. This year had a 5% COLA for employees. We put in the first shift differential pay in the juvenile detention and group homes, and we increased the deputy wages $5,000 in this continued budget. And then we launched the onsite counseling services, which I think is a wonderful benefit for employees. And then when we talk about infrastructure, in this year's budget, we increased the funding for road maintenance, which is one of the priorities of the commission, and also facility maintenance. And the commission approved and updated the new technical specifications for road and bridge construction that was woefully outdated.
And you don't want to forget, Diana, we got a great new guy running the roads and bridges. And, you know, let me say, you were talking about the Citizens Academy, and I attended several of those events a couple nights. People were so engaged, I was so surprised. I thought, oh, that's a waste of time. No, it wasn't. The, our staff was fantastic at giving information, and the people that participated in both of the events were very, very, very engaged. They asked phenomenal questions. They all seemed to be extremely pleased with the results. I thought that it, it was a great situation. And several of the ladies who sit on a committee with me came back to the committee and, and talked about how great they thought that it all turned out. So kudos, that was a great, great thing. One, one thing, in case we don't touch on it, I want you all to know, I go to every one of those 190 meetings, and Dieta is spectacular, if I can use that word. And, and we have our collector goes, our auditor goes, our treasurer goes, we have people from the clerk's office that go. You know, everybody is excited about it, and, and after you see the citizens talking amongst themselves and to us, I, I feel like we've never done anything so worthwhile. I'm just really thrilled with it. But I, I want to give her a pat on the back, because she's, she's really done a good job on those, really.
Well, that's a great segue into our goals for 2025, which is, you know, the implementation of the senior relief tax program, which kicks off January 2nd. And I would also echo that on what staff has done and led by Dieta about our public outreach. I don't know any county in the state of Missouri that has adopted this program, that has done the proactive education and made themselves available and answering questions as much as Clay County has done. Now, we know, we still hear citizens that are just now hearing about it, so anyone who's listening to my voice, please share that information with individuals. I was laughing, I was in line to vote, and so people around me, you know, I'm asking, do you all know about it? So I think, you know, it is word of mouth, but I think those education programs that we have done have been very helpful, and they're telling other people. And as I said, I don't know any other county in the state of Missouri that has gone to the levels that we have to try and educate individuals so they know what's available to them coming in January. Some of the other initiatives for 2025 is to create a comprehensive vehicle equipment replacement program. While we have, and when you see the five-year CIP, you'll see we do have equipment there in the five-year CIP, but we really need to go beyond that, and we need to develop a program that is for every piece of equipment that needs to have a life cycle, and what year are we going to replace it? What do we anticipate that cost is, even if it's in seven years, 10 years, 15 years? It helps us just with a good planning. We want to expand our loss control. We've made some great strides with loss control this year. You heard about workers' comp, we've done some other things. And certainly cybersecurity is one that we have made emphasis internally on, and we're going to continue to do that. Continue updating chapters of the Code of Ordinances. And also what is included in this budget is the addition of a grant writer position. This was a position that was noted specifically and called out in the strategic plan. This is a position that will help all departments across the organization not only find grants, help them write grants, because that's key to being successful to get a grant, is how you write it, and meeting those requirements, and then also helping those departments. While each department will manage their grants, the grant writer will also help them to ensure that we are timely in getting our returns and our submitting for reimbursement and managing those and working with them and sort of become our grant guru. Some economic opportunities, I think we're continuing to analyze our TIF projects, and, you know, again, in 2025, we're recommending that 6% be a set aside from sales tax in TIF area, or for the TIF areas versus 7%. So again, we're continuing to monitor that as TIFs come online and retire, so that we're not tying up funds in the TIF fund and then not being utilized. Also, one of the projects is updating the building code, and as we said, talking about funding tourism that was previously funded by ARPA. Obviously, for safety and well-being, on next, tomorrow night, you're going to see award recommendation for the construction of the Law Enforcement Resource Center. We'll talk more about the transition facility, exploring a municipal court. We talked about adding a paralegal to the prosecutor's office and then doing security upgrades at the juvenile detention security areas. Employer of choice, we've talked about it, but what is in the plan and in the numbers that you're seeing is 5% cost of living increase. However, for detention officers, we're recommending that their starting salary and every detention officer to address compression would receive a $7,000 increase. And as we talked about in the prosecutor's office, we're recommending that they would not be a 5%, but they would be getting an 8%, trying to get them closer to the market. And as I mentioned earlier, we have a lump sum of $1,061,000 set aside for implementation of the compensation and classification study, and then as the commission had already approved, contributing to employee dental premiums. When it comes to infrastructure, what you're going to see in this budget is a 30% increase in our 2025 road maintenance program funding, and also consideration of updating the park master plan. I believe, Commissioner Johnson, you have a question?
Yeah. I, you talked about the 5% COLA.
Yes.
And I didn't hear everything you said, because I was reading something in the budget book here. But just to be clear, that 5% COLA, that's more than a cost of living, that's higher than the cost of living adjustment. Did you mention that?
I did not, but you're absolutely correct. The CPI is, and I, forgive me, I don't have the latest and greatest number, but the last time I looked, it was, I think, right around 3%, a little less than 3%. So we're proposing to give our employees 5%. So that is above the CPI. Again, trying to help them.
Right.
You know, understand, you know, the difficulty that everybody is facing. I also want to remind the commission that there is no increase, not only are you helping with dental, which we've never done in the past, so those that had dental, because it's voluntary, they will see a savings. And also, we are not raising health insurance premiums this year, and so, which we have had to do in the past, and I was just... And I was just talking to the auditor during the meeting when Kim was talking about health and the numbers coming in for this year are, look fantastic. And so I think we're going to be able to have a really strong, again, add to the fund balance. So I'm very pleased that we chose not to raise rates this year and I'm hoping that holds again for employees. So, you know, all of those little things impact our employees' take-home wages and that's important.
And that's good, and that's what I want to emphasize. I want to make sure our employees know that we're not doing the bare minimum. We're not just doing, okay, cost of living, you know, is whatever, 3%, whatever this year, we're going above and beyond that because, number one, we value them, but also, we realize they're behind and this class and compensate will probably show a little bit of that, so we're trying to play a little bit of catch-up already have the past couple of years. But so that, so really, the 5% isn't just a COLA, it's an increase, it's a pay increase more than just a cost of living adjustment. So just to make sure that's clear. Thank you.
All right, if there are no other questions, we'll go to the, just separate you two. I'm going to have to, I'm going to go to the administrative services function, which there are eight departments that are classified in this particular function, the clerk's office, the collector, the recorder of deeds, purchasing, administrative services, IT department, GIS, and treasurer. And so, again, same format that you've seen in other areas, you see the 24 budget, you see the 25 proposed, the percent change, and then the pie chart shows you how is that distributed. And again, 39% is in personnel and then 38% is in contractual. And so just briefly, you know, with regard to the increase in the clerk's budget, there's some minor things in there, a lot of it is our personnel costs, inflationary costs. And then you'll see, I will say, the collector and the clerk specifically. We've added some funding in there because of our senior tax relief program such as, you know, sending out postcards next year. And so there's a printing cost and there's a mailing cost and, you know, so those kind of things you're going to see that are also in those budgets. Really, administrative services, again, a 10%, it's not a huge dollar amount because it's not a large budget, but again, a lot of that is tied to our senior tax relief program and also our civic academy. We launched it this year, but we really didn't have a budget for it. So we kind of moved things around and made it work, but we've added some funds to it for next year to really boost it up a little bit. One of the things we've talked about and surveyed back is, you know, maybe starting it a little earlier, but we know that's hard for people when they get home from work. So we've talked about providing a simple meal, whether it's sandwiches or a pizza or something. Again, they're giving up their time. And so we put some funds in here to accommodate those two sessions, a spring and a fall session. IT is up 10% and I apologize, I didn't highlight this on the other slides, but if you look down at the very bottom, you'll see a context text that says, "This includes $300,000 from the capital fund and other funds." And so when you're looking at these budget numbers, this is not just general fund. What we've tried to do is put together for you, if you ask me, you know, Diana, what's the IT department costing us this year? Well, I can tell you it's $3.9 million. That's their general fund cost, but it's also money coming out of the capital fund because they have a capital project to replace and do some upgrades at the data center and I have no idea it is, but a SAN something, so I'm assuming it's a server or something. And so those costs or those budgeted items are grouped together for you so you have the total picture of each department. And then our GIS is down a little bit and the reason it's actually down, they're getting wage increases, they're getting all that, but there is a function that happens like every other year when we do sort of an aerial and we have costs associated with that with Mark. We don't do it every year and so 25 is an off-year for that, so you see that savings. And then the treasurer has, again, personnel cost increases based on our COLA and benefits and then just inflationary costs. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Administrative Services Officer Dieta Jacobs, who's going to kind of walk you through their accomplishments and goals and answer any questions you have about their budgets.
Well, good morning. I don't see a lot of smiles yet.
So our accomplishments for 2024, you know, I don't know that this really is, the biggest accomplishment for me is to bring our team together and to continue to break down the silos in the county and the communication aspect. I have never seen groups work together and to communicate with each other and reach out to each other as well as this group has done in the last year. And the impetus for that has been the senior tax credit. They are leaning on each other and we are working really well as a team. So to highlight the accomplishment, that would be our number one. For the financial stability, we hosted the Sunshine Law Training earlier in the year. The clerk hosted that. Conducted, we have conducted 14 informational meetings. We still have two, maybe three, depending on how many people show up, we may do a second session in Excelsior Springs to round out the year for our presentations on the senior tax relief. And we have increased our prepayments by 33%, which is about $1 million. We are really trying to tout that and get folks to contribute early so that the tax, their tax bill doesn't hit them quite so hard in December, if they can make those prepayments. Economic opportunity, the commission approved the subscription base for the recorder of deeds. We've had that for about two months. We've averaged $1,500 on the subscription per month and about $6,500 on copy fees with that implementation. Safety and well-being is the, there's a program called the Judicial Privacy Act. That is a program that was approved by the state that allows our departments to shield information of our judiciary to prevent them being targeted by folks who aren't happy with their decisions. Our IT department was instrumental in the centralized dispatch and getting the program up and running and the center up and running and they are constantly on call to help with any type of issue that might arise there. And then in our enhanced cybersecurity training and the implementation of some software that would, which is, you'll see in infrastructure, that has enhanced our profile in that area. Infrastructure, we launched the licensing software in the clerk's office to allow folks to obtain licenses via the internet, make payment for those. GIS developed a map that will show some roadwork and information on those roads that are being repaired throughout the county and make that available to the citizens. We implemented Microsoft 365, that was a spring implementation. And then we implemented, a lot of our teams implemented the new financial software, Munis. We transferred from Eden to Munis and so that affected the treasurer's office, the prosecutor's office, actually the entire county, but a lot of our financial departments. Our goals, identify the software for our senior tax credit program. We have continually looked at different companies to do this and we are branching out to look at maybe individual data scientists that might be able to provide the structure of a program, as long as we don't get into a situation where it's proprietary and then we're stuck. So we are researching multiple avenues to make that happen. We are looking at implementing GIS layers for the parks department. We have a new member in the GIS staff and that's going to be one of their main goals, is to enhance the park experience and accessibility for those to see what we have to offer. And our purchasing department, this is really exciting, is working on creating a punch-out catalog. And what that means is, the goal is to establish a database that individuals within the county can go to and say, "I want to buy a widget." Well, we have these contracts that sell that widget. This is the least expensive, this is the one that'll get it to you tomorrow, and this is the one that works in the county. So it gives you the variations that you don't have to do your research, that the different departments don't have to do their own research. The goal is to be able to type in widget or paper or staples or whatever it might be and to provide the information at a glance. That's quite an undertaking and we've been working on it, so that is a major goal for 2025. In our economic opportunity, we are evaluating software that will be compatible with the collector's office to process railroad and utility billing. Unfortunately, we do have software, but it still requires a lot of manual computation and the information is then put on a spreadsheet and transferred. So we're looking for something a little less intensive, data entry intensive. We are hoping to digitize the, digitize pages and indexing of the recorder of deeds, that's something that you'll be hearing here real soon. And then safety and well-being, again, continue to stay on top of our cybersecurity position, enhance the training for our staff, more certificates in that area, and just keep our fingers on the pulse of what's going on. Work more closely with DOJ and Homeland Security to just make sure that we have the latest information and that we're in that informational loop. The infrastructure to digitize the collector's records older than 2020 for retention. Implement new public GIS hub that will have additional free layers of information. And to revitalize our data center, it is coming to the end of its lifespan, it's usually a five-year lifespan, and the data center is where we keep our information. It's both our backup system and it's the repository for the information that we keep in-house, the stuff that is not kept in the cloud. So it is vital that we maintain that and that we make sure that it is up to date with the latest security components and the ability to retrieve that information in the event that we were to have a failure in the regular use of our data. Do you have any questions?
I got two.
Gotcha.
All right. I'll try to make them quick. So the first one related to the software for the senior tax credit program.
Yes.
I am assuming, even though we have not identified that software, assuming we haven't, that we are still able to fulfill what we need to fulfill for our taxpayers and their expectation.
Well, Barbara's added or ordered a lot of pencils.
Okay.
And we have an Excel spreadsheet.
Hey, old school's fine.
That is our Plan Z.
Okay.
But yes, we are continuing to look into and working with other counties.
Yeah.
Because all the counties that have implemented this are in the same situation.
Right.
There are software companies that are wanting to help with a transition, but to get a solid, yep, we can do that.
Yeah.
We haven't had that yet.
There's no off-the-shelf product. Right, right.
Not that we've found.
Yeah, so.
Well, and I'd kind of add a little bit, because that was a discussion again last week at the Missouri Association of Counties and talking to all the counties. And while some of the counties are using the same software, how one county is actually implementing it and what they're doing and how they're doing it is different than the other county. So the vendors are, you know, probably looking cross-eyed going, okay, so this really is somewhat, you know, individualized by agency on how you choose to do this, right? And so that's part of the problem also.
Right. Well, so I just want to make sure we are confident, as you are telling folks, and I know my colleague is going to every one of these presentations that are being made, that we have confidence that we will be able to deliver, even though there is not an off-the-shelf product to inject into this, so.
So, and tomorrow night, on your, on the commission's agenda, there's a presentation by Dieta about what have we done, what does the application look like, what's going to happen January 2nd, what do we plan to do? And you're right, it is, our backup plan is, it's old school with, you know, Excel spreadsheets and staff and it will, those credits will be on next year's tax bill.
There you go. We're going to go 20th century on this 21st century issue. I love it.
Well, it's always good to have a backup.
That's right.
How many people, oh, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't have another question, but it sounds like you ride along.
I just want to know how many people are going to apply, do, are they expecting to apply for that senior thing?
Yeah, go for it.
Do you have any idea?
Well, statistically, we're looking at 30,000.
30,000, okay.
I, between 15 and 30.
Okay, thanks.
No, no problem at all. The other question, maybe more of a comments related to the punch-out catalog, which I think is great, I think it'll save a lot of time for our departments. The other value, I think, is in finding folks who may not be great vendors who go shopping around for someone or for another department to go do work for. And I guess my question is, in all of that, if they are a competitively approved vendor, then we expect there has not been a problem with the performance of the vendor, whatever that, whatever the service is. I just, I'm fighting another battle from years ago where we would have someone who was on the point of being debarred, but one department didn't even know of that, and so they would go seek work from another department. Do you know where I'm going with this?
I do. And so I think the advantage of what purchasing is looking to put together is because, you're exactly right, we have, you know, we don't call them preferred, what do we call them?
Qualified.
Qualified vendors, right? So, and we brought them before, you know, just recently, there were four or five that might do HVAC work for the county. And so what we have asked, so they've been vetted, but by having this system, then if facilities or somebody is using and they start seeing a problem with one of them, that will be noted, right?
Good.
And so then we have the other three, and then when we go out to bid, then it may be, Mom, we, you know, your truck ran in great, so we're not, we're not really interested or it's noted when they bid.
Yeah.
The other thing we've asked staff to do is, if you're going to go out and you're buying a widget and we have four or five verified vendors, then you need to get a quote, which this will help them.
Yeah.
What are the quote? And so I'm going with the lowest and best.
Yeah.
It doesn't always be the lowest.
Right.
Depending if I need it tomorrow, but that provides that, that we want to make sure we look at all vendors. Because sometimes it's very easy, if you use one of our verified vendors and you know them, you go to them. Well, we want to make sure all our verified vendors get an opportunity to be part of the work that the county does.
Yeah, great.
And to expand upon that, our purchasing department sends out a questionnaire to the departments on the vendor.
Yeah.
They ask for feedback on that vendor and their experience. So then those surveys come back to the purchasing department and they put that in their database so that when we see that there may or may not be a problem, then we can address it at that level because we are, the purchasing department is centralized for the vendors.
Yeah.
And to your point, one department might not know that the other department had that issue.
Yeah.
And that's why they instituted that. So we do have that in place as well.
Awesome, great. Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Thank you. Thank you. All right, so we're going to skip employee relations since we already talked about that and we're going to go to planning and zoning. So you see here the planning and zoning budget for '25 proposed is 14% less than 2024. The reason for that is, in 2024, we still had funds allocated to do the final of the comp plan. We started it in '23, we finished it this year, and so there's money in '24's budget to finish that with our consultant. And so in 2025, the comp plan, there are no funds allocated for the comp plan. And as you see, this budget, 86% of his personnel with 13% of it being in contractual. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Kip and he can talk about accomplishments and goals for next year and the budget.
Kip Jones, Planning Director. So we're still working on finalizing the comp plan, so that's still underway. The middle slide there is basically what our building department has done this year. Keep in mind, that's one building inspector that issues all those permits, does all the inspections for those permits, and then it gives you the planning cases that Shane and I work on and the code enforcement cases that our part-time code inspector works on as well. And those are the, you know, junk and debris, derelict vehicles, those type of cases. And then we are still hoping, we were approved for a ARPA project for some permitting and application software. We're hoping to launch that still this year, beginning of next year, that's going to help streamline building permit applications as well as the planning case applications. And if we go to goals in 2025, for the planning department, it's going to mainly revolve around trying to educate the public on the adopted comprehensive plan and then aligning our land development code to align with that new comprehensive plan. And then Diana talked earlier about the building code and updating the building code, that will be a massive project for next year. It's kind of taken a backseat to the comp plan, but it will be a big one for next year. And then our biggest request for the budget this year was to take our part-time code inspector position to a full-time position. A couple of reasons for that is we have had a lot of code violation cases, they've increased. And then my hope really with that position is to... And then my hope really with that position is to cross-train and get that position to be a backup building inspector, that when our building inspector's out, we don't have to use a, our contracted third-party inspector, because that is a, a pretty good cost for us. Now, that's going to be down the line, and we'd have to do some specialized training, but my hope is that we get there. And then another thing in our budget is, we have started this in the past, and we would like to continue it, is contracting with the, a surveyor, and there's a state program that helps pay for a portion of this, where we go back and mark the old corner, section corners that were originally marked in the 1800s. The reason we want to do this, this helps when we're doing surveying out in the unincorporated sections, helps with the cost of the surveyors for the property owners, because they can find those original corners. So it's really a good thing to do, because those haven't been updated since the 1800s. So now there's, there's hundreds of those, and we're only proposing to do like eight or 10 a year, but you'll probably continue to see us do, include that in our budget.
Funny you mention that, Kip, there's someone just came out to my house a couple weeks ago and did exactly that. I had no idea what they were doing, and went and found some little tiny stake in the ground somewhere and marked it that that's the corner of some survey thing.
Yeah, and if we, because what the state does is, they will give the surveyor that we contract with this, this complete set of a permanent marker that will be better than what they did, obviously, in the 1800s. So it'll be easier in the future.
Yeah, it's just a little piece of rebar there right now, believe it or not.
And that's our highlights, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Our next focus area is facilities. And so you see here, the '25 proposed to the '24 budget, so it's about a 5% increase. Again, again, wages, inflationary costs. This does include about 1.5 million coming from capital to do facilities projects. And so, again, which is why you see this pie chart, which is a little different than some of the others, it's not heavily on personnel as it is on contractual, where we use contract services to do a lot of our facility projects. And with that, I'll turn it over to Donna Coons to talk about accomplishments and goals.
I also want to say, in that last comment Diana just made about the contractual, a lot of that contractual also is that we have to have state inspections, and we have to have those done by certified people. So a lot of that contractual does include fire system inspections, backflows, and things of that nature as well. So with that, we've, we've had a busy year, which is good. So I feel like when I go through these accomplishments, that we super condense what's gone on, but the dollar value kind of speaks for itself when you go through all of our numbers. But one of our beginning items that we did was, we improved the security at the Children's Justice Center. This involved creating one door in and one door out. So rather than having people go back and forth, because it's just a small lobby, and we installed a metal detector and security system for that with a manned deputy there in that lobby. We also implemented an emergency lockdown button. So if there was an incident, they could, either the front desk or the deputy at his station could lock and secure the door, so therefore somebody couldn't come in or someone could not come out of the facility. We spent a large amount of funds doing concrete repair. This is a very neglected area that we've had for a while, so we kind of just consolidated where these areas were, but to generalize it, we did a lot of work around the sheriff's detention area, we did work over children's, we did a bunch of work, we redid the handicap ramp over at the Rooney Justice Center. Actually, that was just fairly recent, that was around October that we just completed doing that work over there. We have a lot of buildings, we have a lot of sidewalks, we have a lot of entry areas, so concrete work will be continuing over the next little bit. We also did some work at the annex, because we are expecting, kind of going back to our Senate Bill 190, we're expecting a lot of influx of citizens to also utilize our annex location. And the, under the canopy area and a retaining wall had gotten in very poor condition over there. Some of the other things that we did was working with our sheriff's department. We received that NIGO certification, and that was a change for us in how tools and equipment went in and out of the detention facility and went upstairs to the housing floor. And so everyone's very, we're very thankful that we passed all those inspections and that we got that all implemented for them. We also moved and did a centralized copier billing system. Before, in every department's budget, there was copier expenses. And so there was no one place that all those numbers were captured or really watched to see how those numbers, whether we were expending more than we should, whether we had any savings. And by consolidating and going down to one, we can see a cost savings, because we know where the copiers are. We have where the toner and everything is provided by the copier vendor. And so this helps us with having all of our numbers in one place. And we also did the same thing with all of our postage usage, because all the postage goes through, all the postage funds went to one account, so we can have an accurate following of where the numbers are for our postage. Again, those were in each individual budget, they kind of got lost, depending on whether it was a department that utilized the services or not, especially when it's a time like this and we're sending out all these tax bills, or when assessment sheets go out. And those are really when the numbers vary a lot as to how much we're spending. We invested in our infrastructure, which we cannot thank the commissioner's support enough for funding some of these, these well-long overdue projects. We have just recently finished up a two-year project here in the administration building where we replaced the boiler and the hot water heaters. The boiler was from 1985. It was in definite need of replacement. This, this also moves us to a much more energy-efficient system, and it also will help kind of level out the temperatures within the building, because we have a new piece of equipment that is working fully functioning. The hot water heaters were from 2013, so they also were, you know, living out their lifestyle or their life expectancy for a building this size. We are very grateful that Children's Justice appreciated that new roof, because we heard it, they mentioned it in their presentation, but that roof was 29 years old. It was a three-month process to go through and replace everything, because the decking was all rusted out. So it was a more extensive project than visibly met the eye when it was first inspected. But that project alone, and being able to get rid of the stained ceiling tile and bucket setting in hallways, was, was well worth the investment of the money that went in there. One of the other things we were able to do this year is, we applied for the EECBG grant, which is the Energy Efficient Conservation Block Grant. This was a non-matching fund grant. We received the grant, we received $78,000, excuse me, $78,540 for this grant project. This allowed us to replace the HVAC systems at both the boys' and girls' group home. We replaced AC units at the highway. We got new windows at the highway department and a new front door and front window for them. Again, all these things go to energy-efficient products, it cuts our bills and cuts, and helps with the expenses, along with providing comfort for those staff that are in there. So some of the facility's goals coming up this year, again, is leaning heavily on some infrastructure improvement. We are working currently on, and will be continuing working on, getting our upgrades to the, excuse me, this was one of our, our, last year's projects, excuse me, our infrastructure for the Rooney Justice Center, I failed to mention this one, that we were upgrading the jury bathrooms, which, which is really a tight budget schedule going on right now, because we have a lot of trials going. So I apologize, I failed to mention one of our projects. So now moving on to our goals. We want to implement a parts inventory system. Right now, it's, somebody goes to the shelf or somebody notices we're down to like one or two of those items, or sometimes it's, there's nothing left on the shelf, now we have to order or go pick up a part in order to make a repair. So this is a large undertaking for the amount of parts and just the belts and the filters alone, just to change for the HVAC systems, is an enormous task with the amount of buildings that we have. One of our other big projects going on is going back to Children's Justice and upgrading their security further by changing out and getting them lobby ballistic glass. And by, their detention facility system is failing. We have antiquated parts, we have had to do a couple of things here recently of going to older parts that we had, stripping out pieces and going back and trying to make things continue to work. So we are currently writing new bid specs for that right now, so at the first of the year, we can be ready to go out and get that project bid, excuse me, to upgrade all of their detention electronic system, which will include their electronic locks. It does not include camera systems for them, this is all more locking systems, it's what, and their control room needs. The prosecutor's also talked about his need to increase staff, so we are looking at increasing his space by four rooms and a conference room. We want to continue on with our Children's Justice Restrooms project. We have done the lobby restrooms, we would like to go upstairs and work in the staff areas. We have a lot of parking lot needs, the ones we've identified that need to be started on first is in the sheriff's parking lot and the Children's Justice parking lot. Another project for the Children's Justice things this year is going to their boys' group home and upgrading the kitchen. The kitchen cabinetry is original to the age of the house, and it is in dire need of replacement. It has been painted numerous times through the years. Doors don't work, hinges are broken, and so that is another one of our biggest projects. And one of the ones they're looking forward to the most is to see if we can do some upgrades for the boys' home. And then finally, lots of talk about the transition house and the Lurk facility. And so we're very much looking forward to being able to get those projects off the ground as well. So are there any questions about any of the pending projects?
Next is our financial functions, and so we have two, out of the general fund, the auditor's budget, and then the debt service that the general fund transfers. And so again, same format, you see the '24 budget and the proposed '25. For the auditor's office is a 6% increase, again, associated with our personnel increases and benefits. And then the debt service fund, again, it's $1,000, when you have a talking of a small amount, it's a 7% reduction. Again, in this particular category, pretty much all of the costs are associated with personnel, 80% of the budget is with personnel. And so with that, I'll turn it over to Victor, where he can talk about accomplishments and goals.
I'll just stay put, if that's all right. All right. So yeah, thank you very much, Diana, to give an opportunity here to talk about the auditor's office. You know, 2024 is a great year. It's a fantastic year for the, for the Clay County Auditor's Office, and, you know, we look forward to continuing that into 2025. Like has been mentioned here, and in some other departments as well, we made a big project happen with the conversion of the accounting system. It's a, you know, 24 years old and, and something that, you heard from the prosecutor earlier about updating some outdated technology, same thing in the auditor's office. When I came in the office, I was just, you know, surprised by the fact that we were passing around paper purchase orders and inter-office mail between departments and stapling invoices that we printed out. And obviously, that delayed a lot of the timeliness and processing of our payments to vendors. And so we believe with this, this, you know, conversion, we've sped up the, the processing of payments to vendors. You know, I'm glad to say, and kudos to, to my team on this project as well, we've done a number of things with having, you know, electronic purchase orders and, and electronic invoices, but also hired a new position for my accounts payable position, who comes through us from Oracle and has a lot of software background, developed a lot of SOPs for departments to follow. We're also turning all the requisitions for payment into purchase orders on a daily basis. So those two things combined have done a, a great amount of helping us to be able to, you know, speed up those payments and really just get into the 21st century. So that, that, that to me is just a major accomplishment. The second one to talk about, and this is all within the financially sustainable strategic plan category, is we, again, for the third year in a row, we've, we've obtained the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award from the Government Finance Officers Association. So before that, Clay County had never participated in this award, it's a nationally recognized standard for budget presentations. And what we're doing today, you know, I just compliment the administrator and budget officer in the entire county, the departments, this is in fact, you know, one of the criterion of a distinguished budget presentation award. It's a requirement that all the departments are basically going to report on what were their accomplishments, what are their goals, and how do they align with the organization's goals. And so that's, you know, something that we've developed and improved on our budget process, you know, thanks, thanks to, again, just, you know, how the budget team has, has really changed and improved how we've done this before, because we never really did anything like this in Clay County's history. So, so that was good to see. Promised and delivered, we completed our first-ever PAFR, Popular Annual Financial Report. It's basically a high-level summarization of the county's finances and financial statements. You know, the budget, the, the financial statements are very complex, lengthy documents include a lot of things that aren't easily communicable to the public, and so what a PAFR does is put it all in a very short and layman's terms, and so we are glad to complete that. And as part of that, we've been able to submit all three packages from the county's finances of the, the financial statements or the ACF, the PAFR, and now the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award to GFOA to seek the Triple Crown Award, that you've heard me mention before. And so we're still awaiting those results, but, but again, there's really only one other county in Missouri that's able to, you know, have a triple crown, so that would put us in a good place as far as, as that is concerned. In 2024, the auditor's office continued a minimum of quarterly internal audits. You don't see this in every county, I think it's a vital function that we have, to have performance internal audits, to look at monitoring for any waste, fraud, and abuse, improve efficiencies in county government. And we continue that. If we can recall some of the audits this year, we did a parks profit and loss analysis and audit from the request of the commission. Pleased to provide that. We looked at the effects of the, the surtax cut that's been in place since the voters approved that in 2022. We looked at the marijuana sales tax, which is, is the last bullet there, what that could potentially bring in to the county if it went to the voters. As the administrator mentioned, it's on appeal, likely to go to the Missouri Supreme Court. It's interesting where you think of that, all county taxes are essentially stacked already, they're not just in the unincorporated areas, but the marijuana sales tax is very unique, as we know. So those, those are some of the accomplishments of the auditors, and very pleased, you know, I thank my, my team, a great group of, of individuals. So turning to goals for 2025, looking forward, so as part of that accounting system conversion, which was funded by our, our ARPA dollars, our state and local fiscal recovery dollars, there are some other components we're still rolling out. I would like to have something called a project and grant ledger added on top of our, oh, I apologize. Thank you. A project and grant ledger that sits on top of the general ledger. So what that is, is currently we have a, a general ledger, it's got the account system structure that you see in our budget, you know, organized by, by department and then by account function. What a project and grant ledger is, is sometimes you can have grants that are going to vary across different accounts, different funds even sometimes. So a project grant ledger organizes that, so that you can have and track by project and by grants. So this is perfect timing, as we're getting ready to hire a grant writer, someplace where they can basically code transactions to those various projects and grants, and we can track those in addition to... those in addition to the chart of accounts in the general ledger for accounting purposes. So this will be a benefit, I think, as to how we can report on certain projects going forward. And it's available only because of our new accounting system. Additionally, the accounting system has something called an executive insights or key performance indicator dashboard tool. So this will be good to roll out, to present to the administrator, to the executive team as far as looking at what are the metrics we can track in real time to help govern and manage the county. So you can think of things like how late are our invoices? Have they been paid within 30 days? We can evaluate the financial policies with this tool. We can look at what is the amount of our uninvested cash that's available? We can look at what is the current cash and fund balance as a percentage of annual revenues? So this will be very helpful. It's kind of standard and typical in large organizations, especially in the private sector as well, to just have this sort of data that you can use to manage your organization. So that's something we'll be excited to roll out as well. On the GFOA metrics, we'll again, now that we're up to those standards, submit all three of those packages to the GFOA. Again, on the accounting system, I would like, currently, we have a separate capital assets software system. It's called Asset Keeper, and we've had it for years. What Munis allows us from Tyler Technologies is to be able to merge that within the accounting system. So what that's going to do is it can do a number of things. We heard earlier about, you know, fleet replacement schedules. So while, you know, the asset valuation is a little different than the usefulness of a certain, you know, piece of equipment, we can still put in what is our desired replacement scheduled timeline. And this information is shared across all departments as well as all the capital assets in the system. Instead of currently, it's a little hard to share that information. We do it at a static point in time. And so in real time, we'll be able to look at these assets within the accounting system as we make purchases and get notifications of when we need to make those replacements, when we need to apply those certain plans. So I'm really excited about that. We also heard Dick from Administrative Services about seamless punch out. That's another, you know, module that can exist within this accounting system of having our procured vendors in the system to be almost a dropdown feature to select and make sure they're compliant with Missouri purchasing law of only spending up to $12,000 within 90 days for a contracted vendor. And also the feature of you can go and select on a vendor that participates in this program, find the product on their website through what's called the punch out, and it will import the invoice. So there's no chance for, you know, human error in coding that information. So that will be another thing of the accounting system. In 2023, I had a goal of getting a barcode scanner, and we're about to get that at the end of this year. And in converting the capital asset system into the accounting system, we'll be able to do inventories with barcode scanning, and they'll also speak and integrate with the accounting system to show what has been inventoried and the location and so on and so forth. Finally, my last goal, I am launching a continuous cash auditing program. So what this is, is at various accounts receivable locations throughout the county, you're going to have still some transactions done by cash. It's not, it's less and less common these days. You know, more is being done through card, online, not really so much by check, but inherently it carries some risks with it. And so what this is going to be is we're having a part-time employee on a rotating basis, visiting all of our accounts receivable locations and basically checking on the cash, looking at what's in the change drawer, what any, if any petty cash is there, and then looking at what were the last day's transactions, what's on hand. And so just, you know, I'll make sure to make the entire county aware, but that will be done kind of on an unannounced basis because that's just how those audits are to be done. And it's a best practice for auditing. So we'll be rolling that out. As we have done that previously with our, you know, our formal audits, but this will be a continuous program that will be occurring weekly. So that's something I'll be excited to roll out and provide assurance on that. So that is it in a nutshell. You know, we'll also continue quarterly internal performance audits in 2025. We have one under the way. Don't know if it will be released this year on the public administrator with guardianship in particular, but we'll continue, you know, more internal performance audits to give that accountability and oversight to you for the county. So with that, I'm happy to answer your questions.
Looks like you were very thorough. I don't see anybody who has any questions. Thank you.
Well, there's a lot that's happened this year. There's a lot that's proposed for next year that's included in the budget. We're kind of at a breaking point here before we get into back to numbers and talking about forecasting. So I asked the commission, do you want to take a quick break? We brought in a few sandwiches because I know some of you may have one. We probably have maybe about 30 minutes left. I know some of you may have to run to other things, so we did bring in some sandwiches. If you wanted to get a quick break and grab something to eat or drink, and then we'll continue on, or you may just need to take a quick break.
So what would be the consensus? Do we want to work through lunch, or do we want to just go and take a little break and then come back?
Take a little break.
Okay.
Both. Take a break and work through lunch.
Okay, so take.
Just to grab something and then work.
So give it about 10, 10, 15 minutes, then get back over here? I think that makes the most sense.
Yep.
All right, that's what we will do. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. So this next section goes back to numbers when you're talking about the budget, and so we're looking at the forecast for the general fund. And so I'm going to start with, again, this is, I fondly refer to this as the Scott Wagner form, but really it is trying to put it all together because we talk about revenues, we talk about expenditures, we never put it together for you to look at in one page. And so it's really kind of a projection of change in fund balance, if you want to look at it. And again, this follows the same format that I've showed in the overview, but this is specifically just for the general fund. And so we're estimating that the beginning fund balance in January 2025 is going to be $14.7 million. And then you see then what are our revenues, our operating revenues, right, our total $42.3 million. Our expenditures, again, operating expenditures, not including any reserves, is 51.8. And so that is expenditures over revenues of a negative $9.5 million. But as we have continued to discuss, that is if revenues come in at every penny and we spend every penny that you give us authorized in our operating budgets, which realistically does not happen. But from a budget standpoint, you know, we have to budget from that perspective. So if that were to occur, the projected ending fund balance for the general fund would be $5.2 million. Now, that is 12% of the general fund operating revenues. But as you recall, when you all passed your financial and budget policies, one of the things we discussed about fund balance in the general fund is it really needed to not only be a percentage of the general fund operating revenues, but also the law enforcement sales tax that goes directly into the law enforcement fund because it doesn't keep a fund balance in the law enforcement fund. And so we want to make sure that we have that included as a percentage of fund balance of those revenues for the law enforcement fund, which is, and so if we take that into consideration, $5.2 million would be a 9% fund balance. And so you see to the far right, based on the policy that was adopted by the commission, the minimum that, where the desire is 15% minimum with a target of 20% and an overall goal of to get to 30%. So as you can see, even just being a percentage of general fund revenues at 12%, we're not meeting our minimum target. We knew that going in. This is a new policy, it's setting these new targets, and we knew that, you know, it's going to take us a strategy in a couple of years to get to where we want to be. But I also want to draw your attention to the trend analysis column. Again, same beginning fund balance, same projected revenues, but when we look at the trend of our operating expenditures, you can see that, you know, typically we're about, you know, 80% of our operating budgeted expenditures are actually expensed by the end of the year. If we hold true to our trend, then that puts our revenues over expenditures, operating revenues over expenditures of $840,000 we would be adding to fund balance, which is obviously the desired goal. And if you look at that, that then leaves a projected ending fund balance of $15.5 million. That's a 37% of general fund operating revenues, and when you add in general fund and law enforcement revenues, that is a 26% of fund balance for those revenues. And so that exceeds the minimum target and minimum and the target of 20% and puts us on the way to the overall goal of 30%. So my comment to you is by the end of next year, we'll be somewhere between 9% and 26%. And the goal is to continue to move in that direction. So any questions on the forecast for, I know, Scott?
Well, you left it with like the Scott Wagner slide, so I had to say something. I guess really it's a suggestion slash question. As we've talked about those vacancies and how we can fill them, we've talked about raising salaries and those sorts of things to make us more competitive and therefore hopefully allow us to fill some of those positions. So I do expect, you know, we're somewhere in the middle or will end up somewhere in the middle of 2025. But it does beg the question to me that if, if you have to, on the one hand, potentially raise salary and benefits in order to fill those vacancies, those numbers begin to change somewhat drastically over time. But then it also suggests to me, do you, if you fill every position, then you've got some budget holes that come, and they come pretty hard and fast. So it does suggest to me at some point, one has to say, well, wait a minute, do I really need all of these positions, either because I can't afford them or historically I'm just not going to be able to fill them? And I don't know that you make that, well, you don't make that decision today, but those things sort of run in my mind as you look at the difference between that budget and trend analysis.
You know, I don't disagree, and I think, you know, my recommendation would be, and it needs to do a lot more data analysis, right? What positions are vacant? And how long are they vacant through a year? And how many years has that happened, right? Now, and your point is well taken, if we were be able to fill those positions, you know, then, oh my gosh, then personnel is going to go up. But reality is, in many cases, overtime should go down.
Sure.
And so, you know, it's not as significant filling all those positions. And I will say, you know, I've been in the business for 40 years, and I can't, over my 40-year career, I can tell you, I have never been in an organization that has had every position filled for 12 months out of the year.
Oh, absolutely.
There are always turnover and there are always vacancies.
And there are positions that we do have that lend themselves to high turnover. And so I understand that, and everyone understands my little pet peeve in all of this. You know, and maybe there's, you know, if you look at some of that analysis over time, maybe, and I might invite the auditor, you know, at some point, you know, maybe there is, there is some analysis that's warranted that may suggest how you treat either some of those positions or, you know what I mean?
And I don't disagree with that, but I want to make sure whoever's looking at it, because obviously it's not going to be me.
Right.
Needs to do a thorough analysis because where we don't have positions, then we're paying contractual work in many cases to do it. So you can't just look at the vacant positions and the wages and overtime and what does that look like, but you have to look at the entire picture of the operation standpoint.
Totally agree. And, but it's just the notion that, I don't want to say we've been lucky, but just more of, fortunately, how the trend has bore itself out, it has worked out. But trends have a tendency to change at some point, and so getting ahead of that makes some sense to me.
You know, I don't disagree, and I think a lot of it also, and these are philosophical discussions that the commission needs to have, and one of it is how we do budgeting, right? So again, it is by line item, and so, you know, if the departments need to move money from one line item to another, you know, then they have, there's steps that we have to go to. So do I think sometimes there is a tendency to make sure there is sufficient money in a line item, that we don't have to do that step for a timing reason or for whatever reason? And so I think there's still some true-up that can be happening in, because it's not just savings in personnel, it is across all categories, contractual and commodities. And so I think there's reasonings why office holders and department heads do it that way. And if we can maybe change a little bit of our budgeting process and the process to move money around that gives them more flexibility, we might be able to also.
Sure.
True up some numbers.
Yeah, no, that's great. Well, I appreciate it. I got on my soapbox as I was obligated to do, I'm now off of it, and thank you, I appreciate it.
No, I don't disagree. But again, I think, you know, and I think the auditor mentioned, you know, the new software will give us an opportunity of more data, and that's one of the challenges that the county has had. We've not really had, been in a position to really have the data to put together to look at historical, right? And that's, you can't make these decisions in a vacuum. You really need to look at the big picture and the trend and, as I said, contractual versus overtime versus positions and vacancies. There's a whole story there that needs to be looked at, and unfortunately, I think our systems have not allowed us, where we have easy access to that data, to really start looking at it. But I think going forward, I think everybody's on board with looking and using data more than what we've done in the past.
Fantastic, thank you.
So, you know, that's just the picture of 2025 and what we think is going to happen to fund balance. But again, I always say, we don't make budget decisions in a vacuum, and it's not just a single year, but we want to make sure we look forward. And so what you have on this slide is sort of our projection of sales tax. I think it's very important because again, I've talked about, it's really good to have diversity in your revenue stream and have a three-legged stool. We pretty much have a one-legged stool, and that is sales tax and use tax, that, you know, 66% of the general fund. And so sales tax is very important, so what you see here is sort of our projections. On those revenue streams by category, you will see that in 2025, as I've mentioned, for the very first time, we're proposing use tax coming into the general fund. If you look at our forecast out '26 through '28, we are continuing that recommendation that there is funding from use tax coming into the general fund to help sustain the general fund and its operations. So this chart is kind of to show you that our 5% annual growth is what we're projecting in our sales tax and use tax revenues. Then if we look at revenue as a whole, because again, it is our major revenue is sales tax, but there are other revenue streams there such as grants and the property tax and fines and fees and miscellaneous, and so we make these assumptions. And so what this chart shows you is how did we get to what we believe our forecast revenue is in 2025 and through 2028 as we project and look at that. But again, that's only one half of the equation. We have to look at the expenditures when we're forecasting, and so again, taking our proposed 2025 budget, and this is based on trends, and then we take our assumptions of wages and health insurance, benefits, utilities, contractual commodities, somewhat of a historical. Now, I would say what we have historically done with wages the last several years is greater than 3%. But health insurance at 7%, we've not really done that the last couple of years, so we've been able to balance it out. But I would say, looking forward at next year, a year from now, I would say these assumptions need to be looked at, and we probably need to do some readjustment on those. But for these purposes, we used these assumptions for our expenditure categories, and so then you see our projection for the general fund expenditures going forward. And so when you put those together on a chart, so this is our projected revenue expenditures and fund balance, and so you see 2025 proposed, and the important thing is, looking at those lines, that you see the blue revenue line is forecasted to create a gap and be greater than our projected trend on our expenditures, was the direction that you want to go, and continues to add to that fund balance over time. And with that, that's really sort of the recap of the general fund when it comes to revenues and expenditures and hearing from the departments, which I appreciate everyone being here today and giving information to the commission about what they've done this year, what they plan to do next year, and what's in their budget, proposed budget for 2025, and then our forecasting of where we are. And I will say, there are things that have been put into place. Certainly, the support of the 911 has really helped give some opportunities for the county on sustainability going forward. And so what you have here is the budget calendar going forward, the workshops. So today, we had the general fund. Next Wednesday, the 11th, we will have the law enforcement, the sheriff will be here talking about his budget, and we'll do the park fund. Again, I would expect that based on those two funds, that the, I expect the meeting to go from nine to one, very similar to today. Then the next workshop is December the 18th at 9:00 a.m., again, here in the chambers. That will be the assessors' office budget and the road and bridge budget, and we'll also then kind of lay, roll into the CIP. And then if we need to, to continue with the five-year CIP, will be the following Thursday, the next day, Thursday, the 19th at 9:00 a.m. here in the chambers, and we'll finish up with a five-year CIP, commission deliberation, any changes or whatever you're recommending. And then we're proposing that the public hearing and the adoption would happen on June 9th, and we will be publicizing that for the public hearing. So with that, we certainly want to encourage the public to stay engaged. This was live streamed, and will be out on the website for individuals to watch and listen. The PowerPoint slides will also be placed out on the website. We're also out on YouTube. We've got Facebook, we'll be doing some communication, you know, engaging the public that these workshops are going on. And then certainly, if anyone in the public has any questions about the budget, we actually have a dedicated email address to the budget support team. If they have questions about what's in the budget, what's not in the budget, we'll open their questions, and we can respond to those questions as well. And with that, I would stand for any questions or comments or suggestions or anything else that the commission has with regard to the general fund.
I don't see any questions. Are there any questions before we adjourn? Seeing none?
We finished a half hour early.
Very good. I was a little bit concerned there. I wasn't sure, we kind of got a little bit into some of the issues, like we, obviously it's appropriate to do so, but I wasn't sure we'd still make time. So we did make it on schedule and then some, so that we are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.